Presented.
Second.
Second. First from Holt, then second from Berg. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right, minutes are approved. All right, number three, FlexPace loan request for Northern Tier Seed.
Thank you Chair Friedhoff. Here with Northern Tier Seed, they've been to the growth fund several times before in the past. We'll have Kevin Hatcher come up, give you some background on the company and their latest project, and then I'll close it out with or circle back with some financials, and then happy to stand for any questions after that.
Thank you Andy, thank you Chairman Friedhoff, members of the growth fund committee. So, pretty familiar company here, Northern Tier Seed. Primary sector certified seed conditioning business, actually west of Thompson. Originally founded and started in 2001, and I shared a little bit of handouts here, a teach member of the committee here. It's fascinating to see the growth that they've been doing since 2001, and we always joke around, me and Bill, we're fortunate to have Bill Weber, the co-owner of the business here, along with Beth Hughes, the office manager, and finance representative Randy Knutzvig here. But we always joke around the picture that he has actually in his facility of what it used to look like and what it's looking like now, and it's just kudos to the growth and the financing support of the local growth fund here. So, like I said, primary sector certified seed conditioning business. They continue in substantial growth and demand and expansion opportunities mainly through their suppliers related to the soybean conditioning and holding there. Several, I would say, from the nationally company presence. For this, as these nationally known companies here are continuing to increase in demand, that's a result of a project here needing more infrastructure support. So for this project here, they're looking to purchase 6,000 bushel hopper bins, some added concrete square footage to the west of their property, and then also extending the conveyor systems to extend in the current 36 bin operation that they have there to improve the efficiency there. So, that's what this project looks like as a whole, as to help for the capacity related to their suppliers, and then also they improve from an operational standpoint. And then I actually, if you don't mind Chair, I would invite Bill Weber up here to just share a little bit about the company, and then also talk about the growth that he's been displaying in the incoming years since the last time he was here in 2022, or 2023 actually. So, Bill, come on up.
Thank you Kevin. Just like to thank the committee for all the help that you've given us in the past and support. We wouldn't be where we are if it wasn't for you folks here, they help us. And the reason for this expansion that we were here two years ago, we had picked up business then, and since then, now one of our major companies, they want to increase us by about between 15 and 20% more production. Plus last year, we picked up two more major companies, one is Wilbur Ellis, and we picked up Simplot Soil Builders now. So we are distributing their seed throughout the whole state of North Dakota, northern 20% of South Dakota, and eastern Minnesota. So, with the increased capacity is that we can hold more product for in the spring delivery. That's when they need it because their dealers do not have enough space, and we're putting in the high-speed conveyor to load out. Load out now takes about, you could say, just say 20 minutes for the load a truck. We'll be maybe down to about 12 minutes. We should load a semi. And in the springtime, how busy when we're loading out all these beans for all our major companies, we are loading between 50 and 60 semi loads a day. So this is why, I guess we are here requesting for this another expansion. Any questions?
Just a quick comment, thank you for investing in us, hence why we invest in you. And so, I looked at this picture, I don't know what you looked like before, but the cars look like matchbox cars for the size of your facility. So, it's a huge facility, it's impressive.
And if you're wondering where the six bins are going to go, if you see the cars, it's right to the left of them where all them bins are cluttered together, there's 36, so they're going to go right on the end. So that's where they are going to go. So, if you want to know how big it is, there's 11 acres of concrete. So that's what it is, and it all has to do with you folks being behind us over the years, and I just want to thank you.
Very welcome. Any comments, questions?
So it sounds like this isn't just going to help you, it's actually going to help our neighbors and our local farmers as well.
It's going to help that, and it's going to, especially the businesses in Thompson like Northdale Oil, they get all the trucker business, fuel, there's a lot of fuel sold just because of that.
Awesome, thank you.
How many people do you employ now?
We're at about, what, 14, 15, and then this winter, we're going to have two more.
Great.
We're bringing in more. So, because we're running two shifts, so.
Great. Any more comments?
Chair, I can run through the, just the financials for, you know, the request amount. So it's about just over $860,000 project total, 868,000. The request from the growth fund is a $53,947 loan to leverage a hundred and just shy of a $162,000 grant from the bank in North Dakota. It'd be deferred for the standard 10 years and then paid back over 12 months at 3.25% and we'd be secured with a mortgage, UCC on the equipment we're buying, as well as personal guarantees.
Anybody else got any questions, comments? Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All right, first maybe, second from Chris. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Thank you.
Pass. Thank you. All right, number four, information only, loan portfolio update.
We just had two that we wanted to make you guys aware of that are a couple months past due. We did decide if they're only a month past due, we wouldn't bring them forward just because payments could come in a little bit late in that month if they were lost in the mail or ACH payments sometimes don't come in right away depending on the day of the month. So the two right now that we're looking at are African Arts Arena and Tag Night Building. I've been in contact with both and they will be making payments here soon, so we should be caught up by the next meeting, and if not, we'll be sure to bring it forward to you guys and show you guys the loan balance sheet as well.
No comment. I've asked before, could we get attachments on this, just stating whatever you said, just so we're able to view it and have it in front of us instead of having to remember? So, I greatly appreciate that, thank you.
All right.
I move adjournment.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, first from Rebecca, second from Amy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Have a good night.
Welcome, everybody. We're going to call to order the Grand Fork City Council meeting for Monday, July 21st. If we get a roll call, please, Marine.
Weigel.
Here.
Sowinski.
Here.
Berg.
Here.
Linsky. Friedols.
Here.
Veen.
Here.
President Sandy.
Here.
Incio, we have a quorum.
All right, thank you. Item 1.2, Pledge of Allegiance, please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item 1.3, Mayor's Announcements. First, I want to thank the Veterans Memorial Park Committee. They had a memorial today. Actually, they had the memorial back in October for the B-52 bomber that had a big fire back in 1993. We lost five airmen out at the base. They put up a memorial there. And back in October, I know Ms. Knutson was there this morning. Great ceremony this morning. And actually, one of the families that wasn't able to be there in October came back, and they kind of reran through, brought them out to see it, and they had a reception for them over at Choice Health and Fitness. So really, a great event and a chance to honor the Robert Gray family, who wasn't able to be there for the original dedication of the B-52 out at the Veterans Memorial Park. So just a great event. They were absolutely shocked at what that committee did to try to welcome them, even though they weren't there for the first time. So just wanted to highlight that. And a big thanks to Colonel Sadler, Peggy Vanio, and also Mrs. Palmer was there, too. So it was really, really a great, a great event earlier today. So I wanted to highlight that. And then I know there's, we've got a number of people here that are here for item 5.1, related to the mural. I'm going to ask that the council postpones any decision or action on that. We've got, obviously, working with the state right now and trying to figure out where that lands. And I think it would be premature right now to make, to make a movement on that. So I guess I would just ask council to concur that we postpone that until we have at least concurrence and have some answer back from the state. And I know Mr. Goss did, you wanted to make a couple of comments as well. And then I wanted to see ultimately.
Sure.
Council is okay with postponing that until we have more information.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, at the, one of the issues is that this mural, the way the ordinance is set up is, it can't be on a wall that abuts public right away, and it does. And so the next question then becomes, can a variance be granted or not from, from this particular ordinance? And the ordinance doesn't provide any language, any discussion about a variance. And so I looked at other provisions of the Land Use Code for the city that sets out what, when a variance can be granted by either the planning and zoning or the Board of Adjustments. And the standard is really high. To grant a variance is supposed to be a special circumstance, necessary to preserve the enjoyment of a property right. The land has to be unique. The land has to be peculiar in that the way the land is situated, it doesn't fit nicely into being able to apply the particular ordinance or not. The North Dakota Supreme Court has, has issued some decisions as to what a variance means. And for example, it talked about when, when terms like unique, special, exceptional, and extraordinary, it suggests that a variance is proper only where property is somehow different from other property, particularly adjacent property. And if a parcel is not unique but is disadvantaged by its zoning restriction equally with other property in the area, issuance of a variance is improper. So it's a fairly high standard to, to grant a variance in the first instance. And in this case, I think it would be difficult to get to that standard when you're talking about a wall on a building. I don't know how that can be peculiar or unique or special than any other wall that is subjected to the same ordinance. So that was one of the first items that I addressed in the memo that I prepared is to allow my office to take a look and see if there is some other standard other than a variance standard that, that the council may be interested with respect to this particular ordinance, because there may be circum- respect to this particular ordinance, because there may be circumstances where a mural may not fit nicely within the particular ordinance, but you may want to permit it notwithstanding that fact. Some of the objective data would be, you know, maybe if the building is the setback so far away from the road where you can't really see it. Those type of objective data. So to take a look at that, to give the council some flexibility, because I just don't see how you can apply the ordinance now and grant some sort of variance or exception based upon the standard that exists. Subsequently, what precipitated the second memo was we got communication from the North Dakota Attorney General's Office where they shared an attorney general's opinion from, I think, 1998 suggesting that city zoning ordinances may not have application to state-owned buildings. The way the attorney general's opinion reads is that when there is a frustration of state policy, those zoning regulations, at least under this, this opinion, may not have application. And I get that we're talking about one singular zoning regulation about murals. But my concern is when this was presented to me by two separate attorneys within the attorney general's office, my concern is, how do you, how does this then fold over to other zoning regulations? We're not just talking about murals, and I'd like to have the opportunity to speak to the attorney general's office to get maybe a little better contours as to the application of our zoning ordinances, not just this mural, but how this might impact other zoning regulations with respect to state-owned buildings. So again, I'm encouraging you to, as the mayor suggested, to postpone this, to give us an opportunity to, one, take a look at that variance standard, or to come up with maybe something different, and also the opportunity to speak with the state with respect to the application of our zoning regulations to state-owned buildings.
So I guess right now I'd just be looking for concurrence yet. Ms. Solsky, you got a comment, please?
Do you need a motion to, right now?
Not particularly. I guess unless there's someone that's against, opposed to that, we could certainly go through that. But I guess I was just really looking for concurrence, because it seemed pretty obvious. It came up late on Friday, and by the time the agenda was out, it was, it was a change we had to make today. So if that works for everybody, we'll plan. So item 5.1 will be postponed indefinitely at this point. So, thank you, Mr. Gostad. That's all I had for Mayor's announcements. So I'd move on to awards, presentations. And of course, I know there's people here that wanted to, to speak on that. So you'd still have that opportunity, just knowing that, you know, no decisions are going to get made tonight. And I know a lot of people did get to watch the planning and zoning and certainly understand the commentary and some of the opinions and the ideas out there. So feel free, if you still want to make comments, but just be aware that there won't be any decisions on, on that this evening. So, and thank you for coming regardless. We always like to have more people rather than less come to our council meetings, because it gets kind of boring when it's empty in here. Well, boring is nice sometimes, too. So, all right, with that, I will move on to item 2, Awards, Presentations, Appointments, and Proclamations.
2.1, Grand Forks Police Department Downtown Activities and Incentives Update.
All right, Mr. Friedman. And thank you for coming. I know we've been working many weeks on this and kind of the culmination tonight, but we were excited to have you here and to give us your, your thoughts and your updates. So please, take it away.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Is that on now? Okay. Well, thank you, Mayor Bachanski, Vice President Weigel, members of council, for the opportunity to come here and speak with you tonight. Our downtown is a safe and vibrant place, but it does have challenges and issues. And it is my responsibility as police chief to discuss those and to look at ways to address them. And as I talk over the next several minutes, I'm going to be addressing, I'm using a three-pronged strategy. For chronic issues, enforcement alone is not enough, but enforcement has its role. But we also need to work on education and looking at the environment in which we're operating in order to come up with new innovative and ultimately what we want, our effective strategies. Before I jump into a bit of a historical perspective, I also wanted to take a moment, though, and thank everyone for your support of public safety and word and deed. It not only is good for the community, it's good for my officers. My team and I appreciate it. And again, thank you, thank you for your ongoing support. So before we look at sort of where we're going, I wanted to look at where we've been. And there's a lot of numbers on this screen. There are a few things I wanted to highlight, because several things, as is often the case, are true at once. We have seen, if we look along the, right at that red line and the line right below it, our priority one calls for service in 2025 are at 14. That is the highest we've seen, although not substantially higher than, say, in 2022. Priority calls for service are more significant calls. They're your robberies, your weapons offenses, your more significant assaults. So over approximately 11-week period, that's the number of priority calls for service we've had at Town Square. More broadly speaking, our total calls for service, if we look in 2025, they're at 84. And that number might initially appear somewhat shocking, because we look at the previous years, and it's greater than all the three previous years combined. But if we look up a few rows to that yellow highlighted portion on the far right, what that shows us is that of those 84 calls, most of which are not high priority calls, 41 of them are either for suspicious activity and welfare checks. And what that tells me is that we're seeing concerning behaviors downtown and at Town Square. Oftentimes, however, those behaviors are not immediately criminal, meaning enforcement has a limited role, or there may be some criminal elements, but we may or may not be able to, to utilize those, either because of the legality of operating in that space, or how the call comes in, or who's willing to pursue a complaint. And I'll talk a little bit more about those things. Also, I think of note, if we look at the proactive line, and that just means things like foot patrol, having officers dedicated to activities there, parking a squad and watching, all that capture is that we've had 103 events over that period of time compared to much smaller events in the past. And what that tells me as a, you know, a longtime law enforcement practitioner is that if police efforts are up, but calls for service or issues are up, that tells me that it is not a problem that can be solved simply with the application of police resources. And that's why the education and the environment components are so important. Before I move on, the last thing I did want to point out, just by some comparison, is Winterland. We have a lot of issues at Winterland. And just to put some things into perspective, for the same time period, our priority calls at Winterland are 94, and our overall calls for service are 611. So it's several orders of magnitude more. And we do have a working group on Winterland, and we're working in cooperation with public housing and other stakeholders to address that as well. But I just wanted to provide some perspective that we do have some issues, but it's not, we're, we're still a safe community.
I think Ms. Lunskey wants to know where you call, Winterland. Tell her where Winterland is and which area that includes.
So that is a public housing. It is, I'm not going to get the address right. John, do you know what the address is?
4205 Avenue North.
4205 Avenue North. Did I get that? I've been there, but not, not so that I know the address. So is that?
We'll give you a full year first, chief, before you can.
I appreciate that.
Called out on addresses. Thanks.
I, I know there are a lot of numbers up here. Before I move on, are there any other questions? And, and there are a lot of other data points, but the trends are, are pretty much the same. We've had more going on this year. A lot of it is that, that check welfare type suspicious activity. So what are some of the things we've done during this time period? The first thing I wanted to look at were, what are we doing above and beyond our normal operations? So in this time period, we've dedicated 290 hours to Town Square and the surrounds, but we asked for 436, meaning we could only fill about two-thirds of our shifts. That's going to become important when it comes to sustainability of police efforts and why it's important to look at other solutions. We've written 28 citations. Most of those were in the early part of this initiative back in April, because that's when people were most flagrantly violating the rules and before they started either adapting or changing to what we're doing. We've had 12 onsite arrests. We've had 168 contacts, and we've made 96 referrals. So that's people who, it's not a criminal issue, maybe they need substance abuse treatment or, or some kind of housing, or they need connection to social services. Again, I want to point out that these numbers are only the overtime, only the above and beyond. They do not include the normal patrol response or what officers are doing during their normal shift. So what are we going to do moving forward? Because it's difficult for us to staff every time we ask for overtime, we really are going to focus on the special events that are happening. So we know that those are high-profile. There are lots of families. Something that goes wrong or something that ugly that happens at these events punches above its weight in terms of its impact. So we're really going to try to focus our overtime resources on special events. And we are going to continue to offer overtime until it gets so cold out that, that the, the pattern shifts once more. And I, again, I want to thank the city and, and the council for their support of our overtime efforts. Officers will continue during their normal shift to walk through, spend time there, then seeing folks out. I've been out. We're going to continue that high visibility. And we're also going to start to employ the use of some, what I refer to as covert resources. All that means is an officer in plain clothes. We had an officer out about six or seven hours last week over the course of several days. Good news, he was out there. Good news, he didn't see anything of note. But again, he was only out there for the time that he could be out there. So we're going to continue enforcement. We're going to be pro-enforcement when we see violations. But it's also important for me to, to identify some of the limits to enforcement. The first are outcomes. Something can happen. Somebody batters somebody else, and a lot of us might think, oh, this person's going to go away for a long time, or they should. And the fact is, they get a three-day jail sentence, and they're out, and they're back doing whatever it is they're doing. There are also, unfortunately, there's a small but persistent group of individuals who don't care about consequences. Them getting a ticket, them going to jail, it doesn't change their behavior. And at some point, the vast majority, 99.9% of people, get out of jail or get out of prison. And then what happens is they return to an area that they find welcoming or convenient or fits their needs. As I mentioned before, it's very difficult to sustain police resources. If I thought that staffing 24/7 would fix this, I might consider it. But heavy police staffing is there to stabilize. It isn't, it's there to keep things from becoming worse until we figure out ways to solve it. And if I may, I'll just use a, an analogy or a metaphor, I guess. If tomorrow we woke up and Town Square was a huge gaping hole in the ground filled with scorpions, of course, I'd surround that with my officers, and we'd keep anybody from falling in. But I think we could all understand that that would only be for so long until we either built a wall or filled it in or turned it into something better. So the application of heavy police resources should be while we're figuring out how to fix the problem. Another limit that we have is we only can go to the calls that we're called to, and we can, oftentimes, we're limited to what we can do with behavior if we don't have somebody to complain. So an anonymous call versus somebody who's willing to pursue a complaint, a call during an event gives us more options in terms of arrests than a call after an event. And it just comes down to simple things like, what is probable cause? And even video after the fact, for many things, will not generate probable cause. We need to have officers there. So those are some of the limits to enforcement. And ultimately, the reason why I think enforcement has a role, it is necessary, but it is not sufficient, is that it is not going to address what are the root causes that is creating some of these quality of life and particular issues at Town Square. So we move on to education. And I see education as improving outcomes within the rules of the game we currently have. How can we take advantage or utilize the rules and resources we have to do better? And I think, I think there's opportunity there. One of the ways that we're working on right now as a department is working with our partners in probation and parole, as well as the city attorney and the state's attorney's office, to figure out how can we get better accountability for violations that happen in this space. And I know that I'm meeting later this week with, with Attorney Quinn and S.A. Womstad to talk about that. How can we get something that, instead of a slap on the wrist, or maybe some other outcome, we can try to get a more concrete outcome for certain behaviors in our target area? But it's also important that we work with our service providers. And I had a great meeting with Everett at the Mission last week. We're going to set up some communication, better information flows, because for some people, arrest is very compelling, but it doesn't change their behavior. And what other ways can we work with our service provider community to try to change the behaviors, which is ultimately what we want? We want those behaviors to stop. We want people to start respecting the, the space, respecting their, their fellow residents. And that ultimately, we want to build some of those community partnerships with our business and, and residents. So a great example of this is, we know that Hugo's gets a fair number of these calls. They're not at Town Square, but they are a place that gets a lot of the similar activity. We met with Hugo's recently. We talked about how it's important for them to call in when they get a complaint, that they need to be willing to pursue a complaint. They're going to get their LPO staff more involved at that location. So again, working with these businesses to educate them and to work together to try to increase our ability to enforce rules, but also, again, to change some of those behaviors. Before I go to environment, I want to take a moment and talk about the COPS grant. And again, thanks for this, council, for your ongoing support of that grant thus far. The great thing about a COPS grant, those officers, is that they're a dedicated resource to this area. So they are going to be able to do consistent enforcement when it's appropriate. They're also going to be able to do that outreach consistently and build relationships with businesses and residents and, and our service providers. But what the officers will also have is the ability, the time, because they're not being call-driven, is to work on some of those environmental issues that really, I think, for this particular issue, the environment is the key to the solution to reducing and maintaining the problem at a, at a better level than where we're at. And it's about sustaining, being able to sustain some of our successes. I look at a root cause analysis of Town Square and identified four things. And the good news is, each of these things, we can do stuff about. And frankly, most of them are going to be far less expensive than 24/7 police coverage. Town Square has succeeded. It's succeeded in being a welcoming place, a place for events, a place to do things. It's a hub. It's attracted a lot of people. That's a win. However, the same things that attract some people attract other people. And as long as some of those things are in place, we're going to continue to attract everyone. And not everyone is able or willing to follow the rules. The proximity of Town Square is a challenge. It is close to the hub of our service providers. In a perfect world, there would be more separation, perhaps, but that is probably not feasible. And so we have to acknowledge that if we have a large concentration of folks who have challenges, who are receiving services, or who are in need of services and not taking them on, being close to a welcoming space with a lot of comforts is going to be a continual draw, which again, tells me we need to look at the space as a, a root cause. Couple of those comforts include Wi-Fi, power to plug in your iPhone or your, or, or your toaster oven, whatever the, the case may be. It has lighting. It has awnings to keep people out of the sun and rain. And those, again, those same things that attract, one will attract all. And so we have to look at that. And finally, we need to look at the design. It was not designed to be a hardened against criminal or quality of life issues. It wasn't built that way, and that's okay. But we need to look at it. Are there opportunities there to improve or do better? So what do some of those things look like? And again, the great thing about these is that they're 24/7. They're, once implemented, they can be essentially permanent. Starts with deploying a better camera system. We had a battery early this morning there. It was not caught on camera. So later this week, some of my team are meeting with Adam Jonison and some vendors, and they're going to look at the space and come up with a smart camera plan to really maximize our camera coverage there. Improving lighting. We do not want dark. Lighting actually is shown to deter crime. And so again, that's another thing we need to look at. Any space that is dark, we want to be light. Not only will that deter crime, it makes crime easily identifiable by people or officers walking or driving by, makes it safer if my officers are approaching. It also makes it less comfortable to sleep. Bright lights tend, tend to discourage people from sleeping. We need to look at either eliminating or curtailing some of the conveniences, the Wi-Fi and the power. What exactly that looks like, I think, is certainly open to vigorous discussion. But changing that as one of the several approaches, I think, has real value. And then... And then other changes to look at are the physical space. Had a great conversation with the mayor, city administrator, about just looking at that space and something as simple as blocking off the stage when it's not in use. The stage is a natural vacuum, especially if it's dark. It's it's blind from certain angles, you can't see it, so let's block that off. Are there other spaces in the shelter area or in the the Town Square as a whole where we could change, put in a boulder to make it less accessible or a gate? So assessing all of those those vacuums or natural spaces, try to fill those in as best we can. We're also working with our partners in the city attorney's office and others to look at, could we change the rules of the space? I just was informed by my colleague back there that technically speaking, it's a pocket park. That comes with some rules, but would changing it to a park help? Would privatizing it help? Are there other things we can do to maximize what the space brings, but allow for greater control or or greater ability to enforce rules such as such as privatizing or redesigning the rules of the space? And finally, the last thing that I'll mention as we look at, how do we try to really fix this problem? Because even if we have success at Town Square, and I feel very confident we can make some improvements there, that's going to displace some of our issues. They're not going to go away because the root root cause, right, is deeper than than Town Square or any particular spot. And so I am, I am, I'm happy to announce that working in partnership with S.A. Womstad, that we are going to be, well, we, she, but with my full support, are applying for the diversion and deflection pilot grant. It's HB 1425, which provides a fairly decent sum of money for three pilot counties. And the goal of that is to work with those individuals, that's very small but very persistent group of individuals who either can't or won't make good choices because of substance abuse, mental health, other circumstances, and try to provide carrots and sticks essentially to break that cycle. And that will not only benefit Town Square, it'll it'll benefit the downtown, it'll benefit the whole community if we can make some inroads on that. So again, I appreciate everybody's patience tonight, your support. You know, I'll finish where I started. We have a, we have a safe downtown, it is, it's incredible resource for us, it's absolutely critical, we keep it that way. The issues that we are seeing are ones that we, we and my officers and our community can and will continue to work on. So, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions for Chief while he's up here? Very thorough, I appreciate the work on that. Okay, Ms. Lunskey, please.
First, I want to say thank you for for really taking this and kind of going with it, the overtime, the extra patrols. I just hope you do work with the DDA. I know they worked really hard to to get a sponsorship to have the Wi-Fi down there. So I just hope you continue to involve them.
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're meeting tomorrow. So we're gonna, we're gonna have more discussions for sure. Yeah, but thank you.
All right, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
All right, 2.2 is the presentation of the 2026 Mayor's Budget.
All right, thank you, Ms. Storsted. I'll just make a couple of comments. Obviously, we're three to four months into this now, and this will be kind of the first preview of the whole budget. And then ultimately, council will come back next week with any tweaks, adjustments, or they can crumple it up and have a completely new budget if they please. But for tonight, we'll go through it. Again, really, the the main focus is people, which means our our staff, our employees, public safety and infrastructure, those are always the top three things that we work on in any budget. I think it's just hearing from Chief Friedman, we had proposed originally with the salary plan that we were going to move those three officers in the COPS grant in on in year 2027. We're going to bump that up to year 2026, so you'll see that as an adjustment in here. That should give them enough time, you know, based on hiring, to be able to have those officers available come summer of 2026. Obviously, you know, you're going to see that we knew with the the 3% caps coming from the state that there's going to be some some changes, some challenges, but I still think the benefits of of homeowners, primary residents having a $1,600 credit is phenomenal. We have as many as 12,500 homes that would qualify for that according to our city assessor. We'll see how hard we can push to get close to that number, but you're going to see some of those effects being played out here in the budget as well. But with that being said, there is a lot of positive, there's a lot going on that's very positive in the city of Grand Forks, and the city's at the center of that and trying to charge things forward. So I appreciate all the work that the council does and all the work that everybody did to put the budget together. So with that, Maureen, kick it off.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, council members, everyone in attendance tonight. I will present to you the Mayor's 2026 Budget. You should have received from Mike an email PDF version of a detailed form of a budget binder, and if you want that in a hard copy, we can get that to you as well. But 52 pages slide, sounds like a lot, but it's summarizing this binder of information. So we did the best we could to summarize it into a presentation. I'll do my best to efficiently go through this, but not leaving out any of the important details. But there is time after presentation tonight, I'm available for questions either tonight or then next week's to come. We want a a plan that we can bring forward ultimately together for final adoption of the budget for 2026. The presentation, the agenda listed here, not going to read through that, but that's the order we plan to go through. And from there, I will go on to the mayor highlighted his priorities of public safety, also investment in our people, infrastructure, quality of life. But a lot of what you'll see in this budget is that public safety. And just here lists some of those different areas within each of those scopes, what we look to include in this budget going forward. These next few slides here regarding salaries and benefits, you heard Gretchen up here speaking about the salaries, and I'm not going to go in too much detail here, but one of the slides she had shared is just a historical look at what those salary increases have been over time with that bump up and when that salary plan went into effect. At that time, Councilman Wygell, you requested a survey be done of employees about how they feel about the salary plan. That was done, and those results are attached to the agenda. But Tangi and Gretchen are here if you have follow-up questions on that survey or the results of that survey. Overall budget, nice slide here, just showing what that 4.4% salary increase, what is made up of the 2.5% step and half of the ECI component, what that means to you in dollars for the general fund, 1.2 million. All of all funds combined, that comes to about 1.7 million. I think the city does do a good job promoting from within rewarding good performance. This just shows in the budget, those promotions that are included, as well as the additional positions that are part of this budget that we will go through as we continue. Talked a little bit about this in the legislative updates and the impacts of that. There is an increased contribution related to the public safety pension plan. That's a 1.23% increase, which equates about $183,000. So that is incorporated. Also, this year, the state made eligible those 911 dispatchers for the public safety pension plan. This budget, the mayor is recommending that they do get enrolled in here, and there's a $65,000 budgetary impact to do that. Some of the updates include health insurance. When Gretchen was before you, we had estimated 12%. It did come in at a 12% increase for that health insurance premium. We continue 75, 25% share for that premium. Also, there's a restructure with public health that has just minimal fiscal impact included. And that COPS grant, the mayor already highlighted that, that we're going to bump that up a year to 2026. Moving on then to the budget in total, exclusive of those interfund transfers, which just doubles up on the expenses, the total is roughly $230 million. You can see how that breaks out. We spent a lot of time talking about general fund because that's property tax funded primarily, but that's just 22% of the city's total budget. So when you hear different cities talks about budget, sometimes we're talking general fund, sometimes total, this chart here will show the the total budget. Enterprise funds is your largest component of of your total budget. I will just refer also to handout A, that shows a year-by-year comparison, if you want to do a little comparison of the past couple of years on how that breakout is. Total expenses, then we show this by category. Wages and benefits, 31% of your total budget, that's going to be heavier if we were just looking at general fund. But for total budget, your largest component of the budget is your capital, capital costs at 78.1 million. We also covered this a bit in June, but just want, it's kind of an important slide, so I want to go through this with you. So the value of mill is estimated to go from 294,000 to 307,000. That's a 4.27% increase overall. A portion of that comes from growth and a portion comes from revaluation. So when we look at the new legislation where we have property tax caps capped at 3% for valuation, you take the growth out. So we run through the calculation, what that means as far as mills would be a 0.23 mill reduction. What the mayor has in this budget to bring forward is a 0.25 mill reduction, so we're in compliance with that legislation. The graphic or the bar chart to the right there will just show you a six-year look at the city's portion of the mills allocated and and how those, we've, we've, we've tried to make a conscious effort of decreasing that property tax burden. On a $249,000 value home, which is your median value, what that means is roughly $979 a year that you would pay to the city for city services. That's net of a 5% discount if you pay by February 15th. That would come to roughly $81 a month. I would refer to page one in your binder for the mill levy comparison from 2025 to 2026. It's going to break down for you all the different components under the city's umbrella of property tax, the primary, primarily general fund, but there's other components also property tax funded, whether it be the library, airport, public transit, but you'll see that breakout if you look at page one in the binder later. And then finally, just a reminder that property tax credit for the primary residents was bumped up from 500 to 1,600. This is another important slide. We talked about a shift in allocation of that 1% general sales tax. It gets split between the general fund, economic development fund, and the infrastructure fund. So with the demands on the general fund and wanting to put this focus on public safety and fund salaries and capital needs and some legislative changes with our municipal court that add costs, all of that, and making sure we're a financially sustainable fund, that and also some changes in funding available for a street capital project fund. We do have this change in allocation recommended by the mayor to decrease the amount that goes to economic development and increase a share to general fund and the street infrastructure fund. So this just highlights what that means, 220,000 to each the general fund, street infrastructure fund. We'll get into later what that means to economic development fund for that $440,000 estimated Page 13, I believe it is, in your binder will show you a one-page snapshot of your general fund, but this pie chart breaks out the revenue of your total general fund expense of 54, roughly 54.1 million. The primary funding source for your general fund is real estate taxes, with sales taxes making up 15%, state aid 9%, and charges for services 16%. It is worth pointing out, I believe, that the amount that the city collects in property tax is less than the fire and police departments alone. So I just wanted to point that out. We try to balance this out with other funding sources as well. On the expense side then, 54.1 million, we show this in two ways, by category and by function. This is really where it's people-driven, your general fund providing those services. So that is the primary expense in the general fund as shown in that graphic. As far as by function, the primary function is public safety at 55%. If I add up my public safety, streets and engineering services, public health, that's 79% of the general fund. So the other portion that general fund, it's, it's departments like mine, it's finance, it's human resources, it's city administration would make up that general portion. So as was stated earlier, the mayor's priorities include people, public safety, capital. This highlights some of those areas. The 4.4% again is what's included for the salary plan, and the public safety focus includes not only the three police officers that we were talking about that's contingent on receiving those grant funds, but it's also the final year absorbing those six officers we added in 2023. So we phase in funding over four years, if we remember, on a grant. This new grant that we're applying for is structured the same way. So 25% a year, so over four years, we build funding to completely fund those officers. Continue programming, I don't need to re-decide, but you can see we're continuing programs such as the police officers in the schools, we share a cost with the school. Moving on then to how we look at from a cash perspective in the general fund, and not just that annual budget, but looking out six years on this chart, the detail assumptions can be found on page 14 of your binder. But we look to, we do have a healthy fund balance here, as state aid and sales tax has performed very well for us in recent years and has come in better than budget. We do catch up, we use some of the cash to catch up on some needed capital equipment items and then start to build a reserve. We'll talk a little bit more about that capital reserve later. We have an assumed 3% cap on valuation for the property taxing component and 1.5% to 2% growth. So those two factors is what's being estimated for the revenue from property tax. We have funding the salary plan based on 4.5% a year, that's taking the 2.5% step and an average 2% a year ECI. Meeting all the other expenditures, we've got a goal here, we, we meet our 18% policy threshold of fund balance policy, we have a goal here, we want to maintain 25%. So that's what we're shooting for. I think we'll just continue to watch that and, but that, that is our, our goal that we want to get strive for. This does not include any additional FTEs past what's already been talked about with the 26th budget and absorbing those police officers. I would just say too, just one last comment, as part of this plan, we do use loan and stabilization, cash as part of this projection, and that fire reserve, and we'll get into that later too. So as I said, it's a loan and stabilization used to stabilize taxes. So we do have, yeah, 1.7 million in this fund, we're using that as part of our projection to balance things out. We are using the, these funds as part of our plan for the police department building remodel that we're looking at, at the second floor, to be paid back through our public building fund. But upfront, we're looking to this money. It adds up to about 1.1 million between general fund cash and loan and stabilization cash. We do have 56% roughly cost share of our public safety answering point or PSAP. And of course, eligible employees now are included in those public safety pension plan if that would be approved by by the city council. We do continue to work on those terms with the partner entities with, with that service. And then the library board has approved their budget with a 0.03 mill decrease, still an increase in the budget dollars, but they did make a slight reduction in mills. They have some small, they have some building and grounds related, capital budgeted, no, nothing set, nothing, no projects yet for that Joe O'Neill bequest money, that, that balance just sits there and grows, grows interest for us. And then listed there is some of the functions of our Fund 2146, which is our health grant The half-cent sales tax went into effect back in 2018, April 1st, actually, 2018. That is estimated now to bring in 7.9 roughly, roughly a million dollars. That gets spent or split 60% streets and 40% water. We do show that some cash has built in, up in that fund, and we propose to bring that in to help offset some of the street infrastructure costs for us. And 2145 is just that fund that we pay special assessments on city-owned property, 1.75 mills there. So we spoke of Prairie Dog funding and legislative changes at our last presentation. I wanted just to display how that looks before versus now. So if you can tell by here that the large bucket of that 400 million was taken out, and we are the buckets that have the asterix by the number one and the number two, those are the two buckets that are important to us. So now it is projected that we have a better guarantee of our buckets filling, but it is at a lower dollar amount than prior. So we'll get into that also. So with that, as it relates to our CIP funding, first of all, Prairie Dog is just an So with that, as it relates to our CIP funding, first of all, Prairie Dog is just another term for municipal infrastructure fund. So you'll see it referred to either way. We had assumed previous 12 million per biennium from Prairie Dog, and that was split 10 million street infrastructure, 2 million wastewater infrastructure. So now we have a bit of a change there. Instead of 115 million in that bucket, there's 80 million. And instead of all of it being a direct distribution, now it's half direct distribution, half grant that we need to apply for. So there's 40 million for direct distribution. This is all cities like ours and 40 million for grants. And then, so what that means in dollars is 2.5 million dollars is projected to Grand Forks in 2026 and 820,000 in 2027. And that we propose all to the street infrastructure fund 4815. Also, there's a flex fund distribution and that is roughly 32 million where half of that is a direct distribution and half is grant. Grand Forks direct distribution is estimated at $288,000 annually, and that all goes to fund 4815. So those are some of the moving parts that we're working through and looking at how to budget within those constraints. And part of the reason why, you'll see later, why we're moving in some more economic development funds there for share. So animal control, things are running smoothly there. We would recommend continuing with them as our animal pound for Circle of Friends. Lodging tax is doing well too. We have a 3.5% increase budgeted there, 3.5% over 2024 actual, which comes to 1.4 million. And then 2199, your community development is primarily your CDPG, Community Development Block Grant funding gets allocated there. Fund 2163 is used to account for a portion of that general sales tax that we talked about, and that's where we're looking at changing some allocation. But first of all, how does that money get spent? About 2.27 million is estimated to come into that fund in 2026. We have an annual transfer to parking for ongoing ramp repair and wanted to grow a reserve there. Ultimately, we want to build that to 100,000 a year. We have a continued commitment as previously approved of the 10 million over 10 years for the children's museum. We have annual special assessments assumed out of here for the shared infrastructure that we pay through 2163 of that Ultra Sports Complex that we talked about. I would refer to handle B that is in the inside pocket, I believe, of your binders or would have been emailed by Mike today. That will show you the detail on how those funds are projected to be spent. But this is an important slide that I want to make sure I go through with all of you on, and I'm sure there'll be more discussion to come. But what this means is with that 440,000 less funds going into this fund, it has its impacts and how a change in how those funds are being spent. So the mayor has looked at, you know, what are the impacts of general fund? What are the impacts of street infrastructure fund is really the basis of changing allocation here. The 100,000 for airbase enhancement, I think that better matches what's actually spent. So I think that will be good on that front. We do have a reduction in funding of the EDC as part of this budget for discussion. And then beautification reduced to 100,000 a year. Maybe more discussion will come on the remaining areas here. I do see we had a typo on here. Human needs was the same dollar amount as arts and events, so that should have reflected previous was 159, 135. But this budget has those at $0 at this point. And like I said, that handle B has a detail of that. The police grant fund is where we house those officers we've spoken about that get the grant funding, and then we bring in our local share into this fund from the general fund. Public building fund, the CIP and cash flows, the page numbers are listed on the slide there that will show you how those are dollars are projected to be spent. But here we just highlight a few of them, including that police department remodel that's included to pay back our loan and stabilization fund over a three-year period. So we have three and three-quarter mills that get allocated there. Not going to go through this, just want to show you just a visual of the different facets of a CIP and all the different funding sources. In total then, this slide breaks down the CIP by project type, just illustrating the dollars toward utility infrastructure, streets and bike paths, buildings and equipment, with the largest investment being in streets and bikes for 2020. It's mainly streets, infrastructure for 2026. But if you want to look at this again in more detail, that the pages are listed, 491 to 504 has all this information. Listed here though are some of those major projects that are included as we continue to invest in our street infrastructure. And engineering really does do a good job at looking at the resources available, prioritizing. Is it everything they want in there? No, we have limits. We have some projects that will be contingent on getting some of those Prairie Dog and Flex grant dollars, but we have prioritized those to fit our budget resources. So some of, speaking of those resources, we do have some changes to make this plan work, starting maybe with the state funding changes again. We used, we had legacy fund direct distribution of 890,000 that had been part of the 25 budget that that was removed at this last legislation. But then they did add the flex fund dollars of 575 direct distribution over the biennium. Prairie Dog was reduced, but like I said, those buckets were moved up, so it's a better guarantee, but in total was a reduction in dollars. We do have that shift of sales tax proposed to come into here to help fill the gap of 220,000 a year estimate with that 1.5% change from 30% of that general sales tax up to 31.5. And we also do have a change proposed in here from an 80/20 cost share on special assessments for our roads to a 70/30. I just want to, you know, go back before we had the half-cent sales tax, we were at a 50/50. So we were, to make this plan work, we've determined we need to look at that cost share. So we can have more discussion of that to come as well. And this just shows over the six-year period, the different areas, different roads over time, color-coded by year, touching all quadrants of the city. Our flood protection fund is our Fund 4154 for large capital maintenance items. That comes from our use tax of about 1.3 million a year, and we have special assessment revenues coming in here. You can see the list of projects that are included in here, but the one I really wanted to point out is on your agenda tonight, and that's the Greenway Downtown Project. So we are receiving grant fund for that, and the proposal is to use this fund for our local share. And as the mayor was working through this budget, the agenda item had been to pay it back from 2163, but it'll, so I wanted just to notate that change that we look to fund it out of 4154 now. So the capital replacement fund is our Fund 4800. We set that up years ago as a capital reserve for general fund vehicles and equipment, and that was a really good move for us. It takes out the annual swings, ups and downs of capital needs of the general fund and makes a more consistent pattern of an annual amount that we need to budget year to year. And then by doing that, you know, the money is there, ready to go when you have to replace that item. We are using, like I said, some general fund cash to catch up on some needed items in our street department and then gradually building them into this reserve schedule as well as we had already done that with our fireplace engineering, building safety. So that brings us to the enterprise funds. These funds are in detail in your binder, but in summary, the average utility bill is estimated to increase 3.92%. That's on a family using 4,000 gallons of water per month. Also, I've known we have begun planning for the Riverside Pool as we look to need to spend some money there, and we look to apply for a grant to help with that cost. The first of the utility funds is sanitation fund. We look at a 5% rate increase there. Revenue and expense is roughly 14.8 million. So with that, the revenue would match the expense. And on each of these slides, you're going to see we list those cash balances and what they're set aside for, as well as the page numbers for detail. But this will show you just some of the highlights of the sanitation fund and what those dollars have been targeted for. We said this before, but the landfill, we look vertically to save landfill space. And also want to highlight on here, as with other funds you're going to see going forward, the public works facility needs a roof replacement. We started this two years ago to set aside money, and 2026 is the third of a three-year plan. So that money will be set aside and that roof will be projected to be done in 2026. So then the wastewater fund, that we have a 3% residential, 4% industrial, commercial, heavy industrial figured in here to make those revenues meet the expenditures. We have roughly 14.6 million expenses here with the cash balances listed. Details on page 322, but here's just a couple of those highlights. Not going to say it again, but this is one of the funds that's part of that three-year plan for that roof of the public works facility. The water fund, we look at a 3.5% rate increase here with roughly 20.1 million in expense, and cash balances are listed there as well. Not too much to highlight here, but the detail can be found in 364 of the water fund. Stormwater fund has an annual budget of roughly 4.2 million. We have a figured increase here of 11%, and although that might sound high in dollars, you'll see later what that equates to for the average user and 5% for the flood protection and greenway maintenance. And as with all, we have cash balances listed there in the page number that you can refer to for the detail. But here's just some of the highlights, continuing the veil circle. We have stormwater projects, cost sharing that come from this fund. But really just wanted to highlight that Riverside Pool reconstruction and are looking at, starting to set aside a reserve and a plan for that with that greenway maintenance fee. And then the mosquito fund looks, this fund looks healthy. We aren't requesting any rate increase here, just continue to run that program the best they can. That detail starts on page 445. So overall then, your utility bill for the average family of four would be estimated to be up 3.9% or $3.58 per month, and it's detailed out here. I mentioned that stormwater fee of 11% that portion comes to 45 cents a month for the average user. So here's a snapshot of your city's public transit, your city's area transit Fund 5500. Revenue expense about 4.2 million. You have 4.64 mills that go toward funding this. Also, there's federal funds that help flow through that help operation and capital costs. Generally, operations are shared with federal 50/50, capital's 80/20. We were lucky enough with the building to get that done on a 90/10 and replace some vehicles on an 85/15. So we are very fortunate to have that cost share. Much good work has been done here. The fare increases went into effect April 1st. So I do feel much better about a sustainable plan with our public transit system with this and also in relation to our Dolly Ride Senior Rider. That has one mill dedicated toward it, same federal cost shares as I just went through in the previous slide with public transit. But there really has been much progress made in this fund and also helps our public transit fund. I want to probably take a moment to credit Dale Bergman for the work he did with the state to get more funding here. It's really going to help solidify the sustainability of this plan and do the work that we need to do. So very thankful for that and thankful for the state for the additional share to help the Perry Transit Service. But here's just some ridership numbers so you can see a three-year look and then an estimate for 2025. As was highlighted, the additional funding from the state, that's estimated about $232,000 annually additional that we expect to help fund. The Alara Center numbers are shown here. Total revenue estimated 10.35, expense a 10.3 for just a slight profit there. I know Anna and her team are always striving to do even better than the benchmark, so they continue to do a great job there. We have a six-year look and capital plan in your binder. The main capital budgeted in 2026 is the video boards, and that's the 4.5 million total capital budgeted for that. And we have incorporated their six-year, as has been before, into the long-term capital planning and how it integrates with our Ultra Sports Complex. The Job Development Authority works hand-in-hand with economic development. Main revenue source here is rental income and loan repayments and also an annual transfer from our economic development fund, $200,000 a year. A couple of things here, we have some Hive expenses estimated at about $455,000, and we look to, we're working on management of operations, outsourcing that of the Hive. So still working through negotiations on that, but more detail can be found on your, in your binder, but we look to maintain that cash balance going forward in the sixth year. The Lhasa Enterprise Funds is municipal parking. A lot of work has been done in this fund too. It's looking much healthier than it has in the past. Overall revenue looking at roughly 400,000, matching expenses, building cash just slightly, which is good for this fund as we want to set aside reserve for future capital repair needs. But just to recap, salary increases, we have a 2.5% step. We have the half ECI that comes to 4.4%. We have a property evidence technician in the police department. We have three additional police officers. That is contingent on a grant, and that gets phased in funding over a four-year period. So you have 25% of that cost in 2026's budget. We have a reduction of mills of .25. The median valuable home is 249,000, so that's roughly $81 a month total that you pay for city services. Want to remind again just that property tax credit, if you applied through the state by March 31st, you'll receive 1,600 instead of the previous $500 credit because that was increased. I would encourage if you didn't this year, apply for that next year. I believe that deadline is always March 31st. And going forward, we look to bring this forward on August 4th for preliminary approval. By August 10th, we're going to notify the county the date, time, location of our public hearing, which is set for September 15th. They will send out notices on behalf of all local entities where all those public hearings, dates, times are. They send that out to all households by August 31st. A change in that notice, previous, they used to send out an estimated tax statement, exiting tax bill. Now they're no longer recorded, or they're no longer required to put dollars on that. They just need to notify the daytime location of all the entities' public hearing. And then ultimately, we certify with the county on October 10th. But before I wrap it up for questions, I do just want to take extra time to think. The departments have been really good. We, this isn't, you know, it all comes together in the end, but there's a lot of discussion in the area about different budgets and, you know, meetings that are being held. We've had some tough discussions about cuts from what's been requested, and departments have been really good to work with and brought this thing together and working with the mayor and Todd and our staff. So wanted to give a big thank you for that because it takes a team to put it together. So with that, I would open that up for questions, and if not today, the next couple of weeks and going forward.
Thank you, Ms. Dorsted. Great job as always. Just looking at this slide, is August 4th really only two weeks away?
Yes.
That's a bummer.
We are in July. Hard to believe.
All right. Well, any questions? Obviously, you've got two weeks. Any questions forward those to Ms. Dorsted in there, but right now certainly can as well. So please, Ms. Lonsky.
Can you go back to slide 25? This is a punch in the gut.
Yep.
I mean, this is, this is really hard to see. Can you talk a little bit about what the beautification is? It just feels really hard to pick beautification over human needs. So what exactly is beautification?
Yeah, there's different grounds maintenance and things around the city that get paid and the flowers you see downtown and, you know, there is a plan already also that when that does build to 500,000, that was part of that plan with the children's museum as well. So we'll look at that annually on what that amount should be. But we do spend those funds around town with the medians and everything with maintenance. around town with the medians and everything with maintenance.
So could we get possibly like Colin Hansen, Andrew Collin and Julia Rigg to come in and explain to us what these cuts could do for economic development? It just seems, it just seems like not a lot of money, but it's affecting a lot of different groups. And I just think this is a really big mistake and I hate that it's being the children's museum is getting everything and everything else is getting cut. I hate that these arts groups are being pitted against the children's museum. So I just, I really want us to take a really deeper look at this.
And I think we will have more discussion. I would say we've had discussions with Julie Rigg of Physicary to Grand Forks and there's still going to be support for events in town with, you know, their funds. And she's been good to work with the mayor and an administration on some of those conversations. But for sure, I'm sure we'll have more conversations. I think there's a couple of comments probably that came through that are attached to the agenda about just for everyone to look at as they look at that change.
Thank you.
So Soski, comment?
I have one question. So on the special events, they're just keeping their sales tax dollars, correct? Because they get part of the hotel motel and the sales tax and so they still get all that, correct?
Correct. So they've, we've, we always had incorporated ours along with their program. So of their tourism dollars, they have some that goes toward events in town. But this was an additional amount that was used toward, toward events. So it does cut into that stream, but they do still have some dollars for events through that lodging tax.
All right. So as that hospitality tax goes up, then they collect more funds to help with the special events, correct?
That's correct. I don't have their detailed budget in front of me, but all things related to tourism and marketing at Grand Forks are used with those funds.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments for tonight? President Sandy, please.
Mayor, thank you. I really appreciate the quick snapshot and Ms. Dorsted, of course, you and your staff always do a great job. Mayor, I think you're spot on with the priorities for public safety and infrastructure and capital. I'm a little concerned to Ms. Lonsky's point, we're rearranging economic development, the sales tax related to, that we, that goes into economic development or infrastructure and property taxes. And because of that, we're talking about today, I think it's 5.5 grant funding for a park downtown that because we're, because we've got so many good things going on, we're spending a lot of our economic development funds and we're spending lots of money on lots of quality of life projects, which is great. And I think people will start to see the benefits of that throughout the community in the near future. But now pushing forward with the park and using, and I'm just going to bring this point up now because we're talking to budgets and Ms. Dorsted pointed it out, that the cost for our share, our 50% share of that grant, about $3.5 million, in the current budget is coming out of our flood protection, flood protection funding. And I just philosophically have a hard time using funds for flood protection for a destination park downtown, especially in light of, we're also increasing the greenway flood protection fee by 5%. So, oh, and by the way, you have a typo on page 46 of yours. I'm concerned, I don't know, I don't have an answer to how we get all this done, but these are good problems to have, right? We're very fortunate that there are so many good things going on in our community. So I'm going to dig in the budget and hopefully I can find a magic eraser and see if I can help figure it out. But I, and to Ms. Lonsky's point, I don't think we're pitting the children's museum against all the other arts. I think you can make the same, the same argument that we're, you know, we're pitting, okay, you brought up beautification, maybe base retention. We're pitting base retention against, against, I don't, I want to make sure that the narrative is right in that situation because now everyone's wrong, right? All the arts people are wrong because the children's museum is, we're supporting them. I don't, I don't think that's the case. I think it's, this is a priority issue and we're trying to figure out how to find the funding to make it all happen. So thank you, Mayor. Looking forward to really digging in and working with you and the administration to make sure that next year is the best budget ever.
Thank you for those comments. Certainly agree. Any other comments for this evening? Ms. Berg's going to save hers for two weeks from now. All right. Thank you, Ms. Dorsted and your team. Much appreciated.
Thank you.
All right. Give you a moment here. You're up. I can read it and you did a lot of talking. So we'll move on to three public reading, public hearings and second reading of ordinances. And item 3.1 is the public hearing on Agristo tax incentive application pilot.
Mayor Wuchenski and members of the city council, I'm going to give a preamble then hand it over to Dan Goss to talk about the pilot itself regarding this. I just want to provide some overview for the record on this particular project and not give a short thrift because it's quite an important project for Grand Forks. Regarding this project, we're talking about the tax incentive this evening, but as you know, we've worked real hard on that Fu Fang site on putting in offsite infrastructure. We've already spent, when we're all sent down about $30 million in that site to make it industrial land available. So that's been a big deal and that's also raised the value of the property for the upcoming tax year to $11 million and certainly wasn't worth $11 million before the city of Grand Forks started putting in infrastructure dollars. You will also see this project coming through with Bank in North Dakota and our growth fund financing. So you'll likely see this project come through regarding financing with that. And I just want to highlight again, really our differentiator was again, our culture of collaboration and working together and having a really terrific community. I think Council President Sandy said it well, we've got a lot of things going for us. This is really a great community and folks from Belgium understood that and wanted to do everything they could to get here. And this, this tax incentive I'm talking about right now was one of the primary things that we had to get completed for them to want to come here. I also want to thank, we're, Councilmember Friedolfson, Councilmember Osowski, we were out at a Grand Sky event last week, Friday, and I want to thank Senator Hoven. He's done a lot of work on, working with BNSF, has opened up meetings so that they can show up in Dallas-Fort Worth and really help with the rail infrastructure because that was a big differentiator of how we close the gap with Stevens Point, Wisconsin on this project. So Senator Hoven mentioned it last week, too, at that about, you know, sometimes the first thing doesn't work out, but the next thing comes. So want to give him a big thank. We should really be thankful. Maureen, we don't win all the time with the state of North Dakota, but she mentioned several wins that we've had in this last session. And you should know at the state level, we have a lot of support for Grand Forks and there's lots of positivity at the state level for what we're doing here in Grand Forks. So I want to say thank you to Governor Armstrong, North Dakota Commissioner Garing, North Dakota Seed Commissioner Ken Birch, Bank in North Dakota, Department of Water Resources, Department of Commerce. They all work together and help us to support this project. And the great thing is the state of North Dakota representatives run towards us, not away from us. So we're really a great partnership and they know that we'll come through in the end and find success and so they really want to partner with us. I want to give a big thank you to the North Dakota Legislature and point out Representative Jared Hagert, he was the one who really carried the ball in that $30 million forgivable line of credit that really went smoothly. And you can about imagine at the North Dakota Legislature, to get $30 million for one project in our region was extraordinary and it was well received throughout the state of North Dakota because we're diversifying our economy in the state of North Dakota. Agristo is going to be here for a community celebration on August 25th. Likely it'll be in the town square that we just talked about and so they want to come here and really celebrate. So really getting this momentous thing across the finish line was a big deal. And they've been here before, but you know, we shouldn't discount our strong egg community, our vast growing, exceptional area that grew these great potatoes in our region, our business friendly and room for growth and expansion. And then finally, they've been here, our shared values and they wanted to be here in Grand Forks. So what an opportunity that we had. I talked about some of these gap closures. One of the main gap closures that Mayor Wuchenski and I and others worked on was that $30 million line of credit for infrastructure, land acquisition. That closed the gap with the Stevens Point, Wisconsin site where Stevens Point in the state of Wisconsin were providing Agristo a free site with free infrastructure and closer to the market and closer to intermodal site in Chicago. And that $30 million that we were able to retain will help close the infrastructure and land acquisition gap to include rail. And that's really helped to close the gap on that. The other thing we really had to demonstrate is that we had an industrial site that was not only land availability, but also infrastructure availability. That was the Fu Fang site and so that was a really significant differentiator. And then finally, what's in front of you tonight is this 20-year 90% pilot was the final piece. As we talked to you previously, we started out with a 20-year 80%, but in order to close the gap further with the state grant, we did recommend that go up to 90%. I just want to highlight also, even with that 90%, then that 10% that we're receiving will make them the second largest premier sector taxpayer in Grand Forks. Finally, as I mentioned, Agristo is going to be here in later part of August. They've made some progress on the Fu Fang land regarding the letter of intent. They've moved forward with engineering, environmental design and permitting. We're working with them currently. They've selected a general contractor for the, for the construction of this particular site. They continue to work with area farmers as they have over the last three years. And then finally, I'm going to ask, Dan's going to give you a highlight of this, but I want to really commend Mr. Goss and Ms. Button and I've been working hard on the development agreement. I anticipate that development agreement will be in front of you in, in August, in advance of the end of August, so that we can get that approved and that'll also include this pilot. I want to save the final shout out to the northern growers of North Dakota, Minnesota. We wouldn't have this project without our farmers, without our potato farmers. We wouldn't even have the opportunity to be in the game. So we owe them a huge bit of thanks for what they've done here. I just want to go over some of the financials as a, this is a 90% over 20 years. We're estimating the project at a $450 million processing facility. Our city assessor has estimated the real estate value of that 450 million is 186 million, 11 million of which is the land. And as I, as I said, the land is never incentivized. It's a full value in this case. Also want to point out, Agristo is calling this phase one of a project and so, meaning that there's a phase two potential. And so if they're successful in executing this project, getting to market, all the things they're trying to do, there's an opportunity for this, this project and this expansion to have a phase two, which would, which would be a significant enlargement of this facility. I don't know if it'll be double, but it'll be significant if we can help them be successful. In your, Maureen Dorsted, our finance director, provided an overview of the various tax years from year 25 all the way through year 21. And I just want to highlight also that the taxable, it's not fully pilot, it's not implemented until this project is complete. And so you can see the taxable value. We estimate 25 is 181,000 and 26 is 429,000 and 27, it's, it's just over a million. And then in 28, it's 1.4 million. And then our year one is 2029, which would have a taxable value year of 476,000. And then whomever's here in year 21 thereafter, we estimate the taxable value to be 3.7 million, which is a significant add. Maureen went over on the fact that we get to keep our growth right now and it's true to say that real estate taxes generally get changed quite often here in the state of North Dakota. But the point is our taxing entities, other than the city of Grand Forks, need growth. And so we're the leaders of growth, so we've done everything we can to help grow this, our city, to grow the county because without us all being aggressive in what we're doing, they're going to be in really tough shape without us growing the tax base. Also want to highlight, there'll be some, potentially some additional growth and expansion in Grand Forks and the region of $150 million at least for on and off farm storage of potatoes. Some of that may end up on this site, so there'd be some additional value. We're talking estimated 660 jobs, direct and indirect for this company. They estimate 4,900 construction jobs over the, you know, three years of construction. And then finally, we, we estimated the number of school children that will be added to the, to the community and region between 59 and 99 additional students in the various schools. So it's a really big deal for Grand Forks. I want to thank everybody. It's, it's been an honor and to be part of the project. And with that, I'd ask Mr. Goss to go through some of the particulars.
All right. Mayor and members of the council, I think item D, as in DOG, sets forth the, it's an e-memorandum that we compile when we go through these pilot processes and it outlines the various tasks that were, that were completed from consulting with the Department of Commerce and publications with respect to competitors, the Legac meeting, and then sending out correspondence to the other political subdivisions, the school district and the county and their ultimate approval to participate in the, in the pilot program. And these are all statutory procedures that we go through. I want to go through the resolution because the resolution tonight, you'd be approving the pilot itself and also the pilot agreement. And I want to point out, it says, the pilot agreement says it's a working draft. There are some minor language changes that I'm still trying to work through with the, with Agristo. They're minor. I don't, they don't change necessarily the substance of the pilot agreement. And of course, if anything substantively would change, we'd bring it back to you, but I, what, what we've been discussing to date are very minor changes, but we're not quite the final product. The resolution, I'll just go through it real quick. Sections 1.1 and 1.2 simply describe the land and the development that's being proposed. Sections 1.3 and 1.5 outline various benefits that, from this particular project and including noting the $30 million of state funding in that, in that forgivable loan. Sections 1.6 through 1.9, again, describe the various procedures that were accomplished that we have to accomplish by statute for the pilot agreement. Sections 1.10 and 1.11 describe that based upon the information that has been presented at numerous meetings that providing this payment and lieu is in the best interest of the city and does not result in any unfair competition. And then sections two and three, again, you're approving the pilot agreement subject to final review and approval by my office and also allowing, reserving your right to modify that agreement if, if need be. I'll briefly go through the terms of the agreement itself. Again, these, this should look fairly familiar to all of, to all of you. Section two just describes the development of the plant and be mindful that it, it has to comply. In the other agreements, you've seen a list of various conditions that need to be satisfied for the construction. That is being embedded within the development agreement and this, this pilot agreement then requires that they comply with the terms of the development agreement. So as Mr. Fielan mentioned, we've had some exchanges with the development agreement. Again, and I think I reported this the last time, relatively minor changes, but still working through some of the details and some of the exhibits to that, to that development agreement as far as the infrastructure and things like that are being shared with them. And again, I would think that we'd have something for the city council in, in August. Section three just outlines the, how the pilot's going to work and be mindful, this is, the way the pilot works is that there's going to be a reduction through a calculation process where the Agristo would pay 90% of what otherwise would be payable for property taxation. But also as the valuations increase, so does that payment on an annual basis. So we're not staying at a stagnant amount over a 20-year period of time because the number today in year 20 could look substantially different than in year 20. But also, as the valuations increase, so does that payment on an annual basis. So we're not staying at a stagnant amount over a 20-year period of time, because the number today in Year '20 could look substantially different than in Year '20. So we're trying to target as the valuation increases. Then that payment and lieu also changes, applying the mill rate, the applicable mill rate during that period of time. The other thing is, as Mr. Phelan mentioned, the land continues to remain subject to property taxation. That is not subject to a payment and lieu. Also, during the period of time of construction, until it becomes substantially complete and there's a certificate of occupancy, that structure would continue to be subject to property taxation. So the pilot, the first year of Year '20, wouldn't start until substantial completion in the future. Again, some of the conditions, this is Section 3.3. The conditions precedent that have to be satisfied under the development agreement for the city to proceed and also Agristo to proceed have to be satisfied before this becomes, the pilot kicks in or is triggered. There's substantial completion. There's no default under this agreement, or any other agreement that they've entered into with us is also a condition. Again, it's a, there's a 20-year time period, but there are early terminations, one of which is ingrained by statute. There are certain provisions, if there's a change of ownership, things like that, that can change or terminate the pilot agreement. If there's a default under the terms of either development agreement or the pilot, that can also end the pilot. So this is, again, an agreement that you've seen before, but I'd be more than happy to answer any questions. You haven't seen the development agreement yet, but it does have a host of conditions before the city is obligated to move forward, as well as a number of conditions in favor of Agristo before they would have to move forward as well. So be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Gostad? I think "conditions" is his favorite word in the dictionary, but any questions, Mr. Gostad, at this time? All right, is that it? Mr. Phelan, if you've got any questions, I'm going to open up the public. You guys want to comment first, then we can open the public hearing, or what do you prefer? Any other comments? All right, so at this time, we'll open the public hearing on Item 3.1. So anyone here to speak on Item 3.1, please step up to the podium. Any comments on Item 3.1? All right, we'll close the public hearing portion, and then I will open up to comments. Ms. Osowski, did you have a comment?
Yeah. One, I really appreciate the procedure checklist that was added to this one. That's very helpful, so I thank you for that. I guess I have nothing against Agristo, but I've always said from the beginning, I'm not going to vote for this large of a pilot. But I'm excited to have them come to our community, so thank you.
Thank you. I just got a motion from Vice President Wagel, a second from President Sandy. Did you have another comment, or was it a motion, Ms. Bird?
I was going to motion.
Okay. Any further comments on this item? All right, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side.
Aye.
Motion carries 6 to 1 with Osowski dissenting. Thank you.
3.2 is public hearing on Northridge Construction Tax Incentive Application of Pilot.
Mr. Phelan, please.
Mayor Bochensky, members of city council, we had quite a streak going on the last seven or eight years. I was counting them up. We had 11 in a row where we got the school board and the county commission to approve them, while our streak was broken over the last couple of weeks. But gosh, we've approved a lot of great projects, starting with the, the first one in that run was the JR Simplot High Bay Freezer, and concluding with Agristo. So we've, and in between, we've had a lot of mixed-use developments, data centers and the like, and a lot of that was through the pandemic. So lots of great growth, I think, that we will see in the future. Too bad that it's not coming sooner rather than later. So with that, we did get some feedback from both the mayor and I and others. Mr. Gostad, we got some feedback from the school board, and we got some feedback from the Grand Forks County Commission regarding apartments, developments in our community. So we went to there, we did present the, you know, effective 77% pilot over 15 years. So what we discussed with them is a 90% pilot over the first five years, and then scaling down to 80% over Year 6 through 10, and then finally in Years 11 through 15, going down to 60%. That got to the 77%. The feedback that we've received is our colleagues at the other two local governments, they need to see funding sooner rather than later, and more rather than less. And though the city may not need the funding right now, they need it sooner and more than we do. So with that said, the mayor and I have contemplated, moving forward, we do need housing in our community. Otherwise, we are going to lose out on opportunity. I just talked alone about Agristo from construction to permanent workers. So we further talked to about our other institutional partners. We talked about the Grand Forks Air Force Base has privatized housing. They're not going to build housing. The University of North Dakota has privatized housing. The housing itself is now run and managed by Johnson Controls. And some of the new housing that they built are through public-private partnerships, being the two examples we've seen currently, Memorial Village 1 and 2. And I just want to highlight, Memorial Village 2 is not done, it's 172 units, and guess what? They're full before it's even open. And thank goodness, some of these projects got done at UND. Otherwise, with their significant enrollment increases, of which they're going to have a record enrollment of all time, I think they had an additional 800 students this past year, and they're anticipating over 500 students more. And so thank goodness, we got those projects done. Otherwise, they would not have places for UND students to be housed. We also included in there is a letter from Colonel Monroe on behalf of the Grand Forks Air Force Base with, noting the concerns about housing and that we need available housing for some of their growth that they're seeing over the near and long term. We also included a letter from Altru regarding the need for housing, regarding some of their growth that they're going to see in the future, too. So we reached out to others to take a look. Remember, the one in front, the project in front of you is the Northridge project, the reserved by Northridge. It has 155 units with underground parking. The developer really wants to start this fall, is really their goal, and have that project completed by the spring of 2027. The project is just east of Sanford Clinic in Edgewood. The project we looked at is a, what we're saying is a land value of $1 million plus another $27 million of improved value for the building itself, in a $37 million total investment in the particular project. What we talked about regarding the pilot itself is that we talked, Years 1 through 5, the toll tax would be between $60,000 and $63,000. Years 6 through 10 would be $110,000 to $115,000. Years 11 through 15 would be $214,000 to $223,000. Then in Year 16, it'd be $535,000. We talked about some of the highest property taxpayers, you know, once we get to $535,000, that's a lot of value that we're adding to the community. We also highlighted all the developments that we're really looking at. What are the local governments going to do regarding potential projects like the Northridge project, because there's others coming down here? And so it was instructive for us. Moving forward, I want to highlight that we have additional projects. I think some of them are even on the agenda for planning and zoning review and a potential approval. The domain, remember, is 153 units. That's the one would be in and around 47th Avenue, in and around where the new Hugos would go. There's King's View off of 62nd, that'd be 45 units. The Burke Holtz addition, that's kind of on pause right now from planning and zoning, but again, that's, that'd be Kitty Corner from the Altru Sports Complex is on 17th and 42nd. They're looking at upwards of 350 units. Mr. Gostad and I, and we talked to Councilmember Osowski, brought up this, you know, we still have the third building for Beacon to finish. The developers want to come forward and come up with a plan to look at moving forward with that third building. That's one further project that we need to do. There is a project on your agenda tonight, the 39th Avenue South on near Furniture Row, and that's the one with low and moderate income, federal and state credits and grants. We've also gotten some word from, Enclave is another developer in town that's interested in building units, too, in Grand Forks. And then finally, we do have the Grand Forks Water Treatment Plant redevelopment that we've paused right now, but we intend to bring something back in that end. So we, the point is, we've got lots of projects, and you know, whatever the city council determines to move forward with our local government partners, if that's the case, there's plenty of other projects that are looking at this project and how are we going to deal with that. The last one I did, I didn't mention is the Ray Richards Development. My understanding is that President Armacost, along with the developers, are proposing to move forward with a project, looking at trying to listen to the neighborhood, the community, and bring back a project that would be fitting and would be able to move through the community with various incentives. So they are, they are trying to move that project through. It's important to them. So I think that's probably the last project we're going to see, and I suspect we will also see that if, as long as they can get the area, the UND President Armacost feels like he's got a project that generally is supported in the area. We also reached out to Praxis just to take a look at some of the vacancies. You know, we've been questioned, is it really 2%? And right now, just so you know, the Apartment Association has the vacancy rate at 3.5%. Not everybody reports to the Apartment Association. Some say that maybe they don't tell the whole truth when they report back. So we did reach out to several larger property apartment owners and developers in our community. And we did find that, based upon their 5,600 units, that there were under 1% vacancy in their units. And so it's pretty universal, and kind of the major companies that are, have apartment complexes, the vacancy is quite low with them. We did also receive as part of the, this Northridge project, they, obviously, they have to go out and get bank financing, they have to get equity partners. They did reach out to a third party regarding their apartment complex. They determined, based on a sample of 876 units, that the vacancy rate in Grand Forks is 1.3%. And that was a spring study regarding that. Mr. Schill also talked about rents have been rising over the last couple of years at the same time, just as vacancy has been going down, rents have been going up, which you don't have to be a macroeconomics PhD professor to understand. That makes a lot of sense. So there's concerns. He also mentioned, you know, the Apartment Association does sample about 53% of apartments. Mr. Schill estimated, you know, if you just want to call apartment buildings, I think he defined them as three units or more. We have an estimated amount of 11,695 apartments. And he kind of gave an estimate, you know, even if we were to add 2,000 units to this survey group, assumed all these newly added items would have a relatively high vacancy rate historically in Grand Forks, which would be 10%. The overall vacancy rate would, in the survey, would just move up to a little over 5%. So, you know, when we, I talked through all the numbers, and if, you know, we allow 150 units to go, it might have some dramatic impact in our community. That's just to show you kind of what we're at. We do stand up here based upon, you know, when Mr. Sandy was part of that Blue Ribbon Commission Housing Study, a kind of our goal every year was to build 250 apartment units, probably over 100 single-family units. And we are not meeting either one of those goals, and so we're trying to do something without us injecting the city of Grand Forks more in the market than we want to necessarily. Mayor Bochensky and I talked about, it is challenging, what we heard from the other taxing entities, I think what we have to do is go back and, we went through Council President Sandy and I, we, through the county commission, we talked about, we've maxed out all the housing incentives that we can per state statute, whether they're single-family, what we can do with builder and owner. We've talked about remodeling, that we're at five-year, 100%, whether it's commercial or residential, we've kind of maxed that out. And then we talked about our statutory authority right now is five years, 100%. And anything beyond five years, we have to go to the other taxing entities that we're totally there, because generally, when we go there, we get a response of, I wish you didn't have to come here, but we are here to do that. The last piece is that we have a Renaissance Zone, and that's another state project where, as you know, our Renaissance Zone currently is the downtown. It's along the Gateway Drive corridor as part of that connection to our downtown, and then it's in the midtown area in and around where the Grand City Mall. The state, not this, not this past session, but the session before, it used to be you could allow up to a five-year, 100% property tax, and up to a five-year, 100% state income tax. In that session, I think, noting that some of these projects need more, they moved it from up to eight years. And so even within the Renaissance Zone, that's allowed within state statute. If we go beyond five years in there, we're still going to have to get our other taxing entities to agree if we go up to eight years. So I think overall, the moral of the story is, the other taxing entities have agreed to negotiate with us on this, which is good, because I think whatever we decide as part per this negotiation, it's going to impact other projects. So our initial thought is if something looks like a greenfield development, I think we need to keep it within the city's authority as much as possible, is the lesson. And that's five years, 100%. If you happen to be in this Renaissance Zone, we maybe can go up to eight years, but still that's going to be a slog to get that remaining three years. If you have something unique and different as part of your mixed-use development, I think we can consider further. But we're doing a lot of detailed analytics that really, at the end of the day, I don't think the other taxing entities care that much about the particulars. They just want to see the tax revenue sooner rather than later. I think we have to respect that at this point, not continue to bang our head against the wall on those. And then finally, the primary sector, I think, are always unique and different. We don't do, we don't ask Baker Tilly or somebody else to do a review. We generally look at those of how do we be, how are we competitive with other opportunities those companies have? So those will always be unique and different. Well, we will look at pilots, and I think the only, I would call it more of a primary sector project that we have coming down the chute right now is a possible data center. And it would be a data center that's, where they're looking around the world, including in our country, to do more AI machine learning things. So we have an opportunity that may come to Grand Forks. But I would say that's the only one I could see in the primary sector range that would come to the city council sooner rather than later. But again, that impacts taxes, it impacts franchise fees and all the other things for the city of Grand Forks. So with that, I would, with the mayor, and hand it over to, back to him and Mr. Gostad, I would recommend that we do negotiate, but we try to keep things as much as we can within the city council's authority. That's the feedback that we got from the other taxing entities. And with that, Mayor, I'd hand it back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Phelan. I'll just add a little bit of color. That's, I mean, he kind of summarized what my recommendation is going to be, too, as we negotiate. If these are truly, you know, greenfield developments where we already have police protection, we already have fire protection, our costs are already sunk. So any additional revenue is great. It'd be nice to get to that $535,000 revenue on a project like this sooner rather than later. So I think we limit it to five years, and it's lined up well with our, you know, our commercial and residential remodeling exemption with this, which is five years, and I think the commercial side has no max on that. It's similar to the single-family new residential, which is a four-year, two years for the builder, two years for the homeowner. Now, we've got special assessments, we've got the state, $1,600. So we've got a lot going towards single-family. I think we'd all prefer more single-family. We can't have multifamily exasperate single-family anymore if we don't have enough units there or one place or the other. So we need units across the board. So I think, if we're going to go beyond five years, I think it should have some sort of feature. Does it have, is it low to moderate income? You know, I think that's one we should definitely look at, because that's very important. Is it slum and blight that needs remediation? I think that's very important. Or is it bringing something new to the community that we don't have? Some amenity that we would love to have here, we can't have unless there's some way to get it done through a tax incentive? So I think that's, you know, would be my recommendation. I think I talked to President Sandy. He was interested in taking on the negotiations as he goes with the county and the school board, if you're still willing to do that, along with Mr. Gostad. He can raise numerous conditions for that as needed. But I guess that would be my recommendation, too, and certainly, it's opened up to the council, if they want to make any, any changes to that or see a better path forward, certainly willing to hear that as well. So we also do have a public hearing, so if there's any comments you wanted to make prior, we can do that. Mr. Gostad, did you have something first, or?
I don't, again, I did not prepare a resolution, didn't prepare an agreement to do this one, given the set of circumstances with respect to the school district and the county. But you do have the county, uh, but you do have, uh, again, it's item F of, uh, for tonight, the procedures that were accomplished, uh, for this particular pilot. And so accomplishing the public hearing tonight, accomplishing these procedures, then going back, uh, with the negotiation, if something would happen to, uh, come to fruition as a result of those negotiations, we'd have to bring it back to the council, uh, for approval, and the county and the school district as well.
So, I guess ultimately it'd be similar to the other entities, if we were to deny it, we'd be denying it under those terms and looking to negotiate further, would that be a, or what would be the result of tonight needed to be?
I think it would be, uh, I wouldn't do a motion to deny, I'd do a motion to enter into negotiation with the county, the school district, and the developer with respect to the pilot agreement.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gosted. Any comments? Ms. Lunskey, please.
So we're, tonight we're just voting to move forward with negotiations? Because we can't move forward without the city and, or the school and the county, correct?
Um, Councilperson Lunskey and council, um, there are actually three options that the council has tonight. Uh, first is they could outright just deny it, um, and that would end it. Second is, uh, entertain the negotiation as, as was invited by both the school district and the county. Third, and I've done, again, some research on this, but the fact that the county and, and the school district haven't participated, the city could do a pilot for only its portion. That would mean the balance of the property would continue to be fully taxable under, for the school district and, and the county's portion of it, um, that's an option too, but given the fact that you've been invited by the other two taxing entities to at least attempt to negotiate to see if there's some middle ground, that would be my recommendation is, uh, for this, for this body.
Also, just for the number, right now, I, I think, Maureen, we're 27% of the, of the property tax bill, so, um, you know, the school's the largest entity, so we're, we're a small piece of the, of the bigger piece of the pie. I think if we did this, um, we would signal to the developers, you've got to bring in a project, um, that's probably, has a little bit less, uh, value, and may, and they probably have to be more aggressive on their equity and debt financing, and take more risks. Um, I think are, is, are going to be the things that we're going to have to ask, because we can't, we're not going to be able to, you know, rely upon those years six through 15, and we all know that, you know, the years one through five are the most risky, and, uh, so at least we can get a, we can relatively assure projects through a city council to reduce some of the risk during the most risky times, which would be years one through five.
Mr. Bean, please.
Todd, a couple of questions here. You talked initially about 11 projects that have happened so far to date. Do you have an idea of what the economics are of those projects and what that has brought back to us?
Um, Mayor Bocinski, Councilmember Bean, no, but I thought I should have had that, I just was writing them down as we, we came here, but I'll, I'll share that with you, um, with some of the, the value that we've added with all those, um, projects, so you can see that.
Yeah, I mean, there's some risk involved of not doing them, I mean, those, that's a sure thing that we've got, and we don't know what would happen if they didn't get the, the agreement and, and if they never built, but at least that's a concrete number we should know.
Absolutely. My guess is, just looking at the projects, we probably, I mean, this, these are investments, not property value, but we probably, in those projects are, it's, it's close to a billion dollars.
A billion, yeah. Uh, and the other thing that's always stuck me is the Baker Tilly analysis that we have, is taking the guesswork out of it, you get some more precise, accurate, um, understanding, I guess, of what the true impact was. We obviously did that on each one of these too, and, and still didn't make any headway?
No, Mayor Bocinski and Councilmember Bean, I think, you know how paradigms change, sometimes you're a victim of your own success, and, you know, you get new board members, you get new sites, I think the, the property tax cap has suddenly made them realize, um, they have some issues on the revenue side, and so I think the paradigm has changed. So, what we're offering now is some of the things that we did from setting up the local government advisory committee with all the representatives, meeting with them individually as they wanted to, uh, doing the third-party financial analysis, all those things, uh, they want to do, they want more, and they want to know more sooner rather than later. And, uh, so I think we just kind of, we have to change the paradigm now to help them get further on board.
Yeah, I think, you know, ultimately Baker Tilly, you know, great firm, 43,000 employees nationwide, 5.2 million in yearly revenue, they did everything that they should do, and I think what they came back with saying is that there's, these projects are risky, and if you want to get them done, when you have a cap rate that's higher, or that, we have an interest rate that's higher than the cap rate, there's no cash flow for these things, so they're going to have to put a lot more equity in, which means we'll see less, less projects and they'll be more risky, but I think it's a good medium to try to still get some things done to help benefit our needs, but sharing, sending a little bit more risk towards the developer, which will mean less projects, but I think it's a, a good medium.
Mayor, do we know what impacts the risks of not building will mean for us economically and what that return we might lose?
Well, it's, it's always, you know, opportunity cost is huge. I mean, we've, we've got, uh, right now, the base has, uh, Ellsworth has a mission here, they've got 800 to 1,000 people, they're renting 125 apartments, there's the potential to get another follow-on mission for something like that that could come, so that could be another, you know, who knows if it's another, if it's a larger base, if it's Minot, for example, that has to send people here where they get their, their reconstruction, and that's huge, but obviously the construction side, um, on a, on an Agristo project, on U N D growing, on the base growing, on Grand Sky growing, um, we're going to be up against it, there's no doubt. We can try to do something today, or we can wait till it gets, gets really bad, um, and then people say, why don't you do something sooner?
I mean, it would be nice to, to better define that problem, uh, and what that means, just as you summarized right now.
Well, it's, it's always, opportunity cost is the hardest thing to define, because your assumptions have to be quite, you know, wide. But maybe we can work together on that, Mr. Bean. Ms. Osowski, please.
Yeah, um, Mr. Phelan, I was just kind of wondering where you got your vacancy data from, because, like, right on our city webpage, it brings us to a nice little graph where you can actually choose, you know, single-family, duplexes, townhomes, multifamily, it, you can choose the bedrooms, and it states on here that we're at 4.46, so I'm, I'm just kind of confused, and then I was, and that was from, I think, Q3 of last year, and then I was sent by someone a, something that came from, it was data collected and presented by the Greater Grand Forks Apartment Association, and I don't see anything as low as that 1% that you're talking about, actually there's a significant difference, and so I'm just kind of wondering where you're pulling your data when the Greater Grand Forks Apartment Association is stating something completely different.
Yeah. Mayor Bocinski, Councilmember Osowski, that's what I was referring to, that we looked at in multiple different ways. The 4.6, you had a Q3 probably last year.
Yeah.
If that was 4.6, right now they're reporting, in this current quarter, that's gone from 4.6 to 3.5%. Um, not, what, then we were, we were told is not all the apartment, um, some of the larger ones don't report to that entity, and therefore we went out to four or five of the most significant apartment owners and developers in our community, and that's where we got a 1% or less. We also, um, took a look at what Northridge had with their Maxwell report, I think, and then we finally arrived at this point. Um, our vacancy rates are low, whether you're trying to find a single-family home, or whether you're trying to find an apartment, um, in town, and, and then we have the qualitative research of anybody trying to find a, a unit in our community, it's really hard, um, to find anything. So, um, the answer is, it's in a range. I've just given you multiple data points, and, um, I, I suspect any of us can be proven wrong by coming up with different data information. Uh, what I'm trying to say is it's, it's, it's probably not the historical lowest we've ever been in Grand Forks, but it's pretty darn low right now. We've got some great opportunities in our great community, and if we just stand here and, and look at ourselves and don't do anything, that's not, I don't think that's an answer, because we wouldn't have the great community working with US City Council if we didn't try to do some things in our community. So, uh, I'm, I would prefer less to argue about what the number should be, other than it's really low right now.
Um, I guess I just have a comment to our good neighbors at the base and university. Um, you know, a long time ago, when I lived here, before I moved away, I watched the Air Force Base tear down their housing, which it was garbage anyways, and it needed to be tore down, I'm not arguing that, but they need to invest in themselves also. I, I haven't seen too much additional building going on out there besides the new school, and I would really, I mean, those are our tax dollars also, but I don't want this stuff to be a burden on just the City of Grand Forks taxpayers. I, I would like to see the Air Force Base actually invest in the Grand Forks Air Force Base. I would like to see, you know, not too many years ago, the University of North Dakota tore down a bunch of their student housing, and they didn't really replace it, you know? They did the private-public partnerships with Memorial Village 1 and 2, but really, they're not investing in themselves either, and those are our state tax dollars. And, so, I, I'm just kind of wondering when some of these entities are going to step up and, and build housing. I know we have the bomber people here from South Dakota right now, but soon they'll go away. If they get, if the Grand Forks Air Force Base is trying to get another big mission like that, I would hope that they would start building homes on, on their Air Force Base to provide housing for their airmen. It should not be put as a burden on the local taxpayers to provide tax incentives for apartment buildings for our federal and state entities, and so I, I do have a big issue with that. Um, I also don't think that pilots should be used to build apartments at all. One other question that I do have, and this is probably for you, Mr. Gosted, um, within our, our checklist, um, it does state in here that, uh, North Dakota Century Code 40-57.1-03, and it talks about us putting it in the paper and notifying the public. May I ask, what is, what is the actual reason for us having to notify the public of these in the Herald?
Under the, under the statute you're citing, it's subdivision or subsection five of that, of that statute, uh, unless the, the city council would find that there are no competitors at all, uh, then you don't have to provide that notice. So you're providing the notice to provide, to let potential competitors appear before the public hearing and, and make their case, so that's the purpose of it.
Okay. Um, one more comment too. Um, I know that some of the people we're talking about trying to provide, get homes for are the people that want to move here for Agristo. We just gave them a huge tax break, huge, and now, now they want us to incentivize their workers also by building apartments. I, I have, oh, no one's incentivizing me, you know, no one's building me places to live. I'm just wondering how far this goes. I mean, they get, they don't have to pay too much in taxes due to the pilot, and then their workers, you know, they won't be contributing to the property tax either, because they'll be living in these apartments, so I, that are incentivized by our pilot program, so I disagree 100% that any apartment building should get a pilot, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Osowski. Do you have a comment, Mr. Phelan?
If I could comment, um, number one, we, I know, uh, we have some great local developers, and I don't think we want to, um, cast aspersions on them, and number two, they're one of our largest property taxpayers, uh, if you look across all our apartment, uh, complex owners. I think, uh, if we're going to be successful as a community moving forward in, in coming decades, um, things are going to become decentralized to the local community. Um, if, we, we can watch our federal government right now, um, with the amount of debt they have, they're only going to be able to do so many things. State government's only going to be, um, the destiny of Grand Forks is in our hands to show that we're a great partner, and we're willing and able to partner with the state and local, um, federal government. The Air Force and the Pentagon are, are looking at local communities that can help support missions, and, um, they say things like this, they're, um, about the warfighter, and, um, and competing with, um, as you like to say, Councilmember Osowski, China. And we're struggling enough to help support our warfighters, and so they're not going to specifically look into housing, they're not going to specifically look in equality of life investments and those sorts of things, they're going to rely upon the local community to do that. And again, similar to the U N D or similar to Agristo, um, they're going to just look for results and outcomes, they're not going to say, I don't know, I'll, they're not going to tell us how to get there, they're just going to say, if we don't have housing, they're going to say, we have a problem locating there, because there's no place to live, they're not going to ask us for anything other than to say we need housing. And so that's kind of where we're at as a community, and, uh, we can push it on to somebody else, because it's kind of hard and we don't want to do it, um, but that'll lead to our, um, our lack of success, because the world's coming to the communities like Grand Forks that can succeed and lead locally will succeed, and that's why we're so successful right now. But we've got to continue to do that, because that's what other entities are going to look on to us for. So, I'm so thankful that we're here and we have a city council that's willing to look at solutions.
Ms. Berg, please.
If we move forward with negotiations, are we going to have to have another public hearing in the future?
No, tonight would satisfy that requirement.
Okay. And Mayor, I thought it was really interesting that, I, I hadn't heard the stat before, that we only, the eight to, 800 to 1,000 people, we only have, like, from the, from the B-52 bombers, there's only 125 apartments that they're renting versus, so they're, I've heard that they've been staying in hotels as well, because we don't have enough housing as it is.
They're coming in different tranches, so the 800 to 1,000 haven't been all at once, but there's, at the Beacon, there's apartments that there's six, six to an apartment, so they're getting as many people in the apartments as they can.
I think that's against city ordinance.
Well, Mr. Bassblut did have to, did have to work on that one, and of course, is he, is he here tonight? There was a, there was a concession that was able to be given, but it was, it was under our current code, so there was some, some, anyway, it is happening, so.
Okay.
Any other comments, um, otherwise we'll open the public hearing. Mr. Friedhoffs, please.
So, I mean, as you look forward to the quality of life stuff that we're trying to improve, and I think the, the industries that are coming and some that are, people aren't even aware of yet, there is a substantial amount of people coming to this town, and I think there was an article, I think that was released this morning, that said, "North Dakota is in the top three of places people are looking for to get employ, employment", and so people are learning the quality of life here is good, but I've had employees before say, hey, I can't find a place. You know, not everyone wants a three-bedroom, not everyone wants a one-bedroom, we are definitely short on housing, and I think this council, we are at the precipice of making this final decision. We will look back in 10 years and exactly what Mr. Phelan said, either we're going to regret our decision, or we're going to be very proud of what we've done, so I, I want, I ask you to think about that prior to, uh, making a decision on this.
Thank you, Mr. Friedhoffs. Any other comments? All right, with that, we're going to open the public hearing portion, so we will open the public hearing at item 3.2, so please come up and speak. And you'll have this, I believe in the state statute, there's no limit on the speaking time, so Ms. Leek, you have as much time as you'd like.
Okay. You'll have to press the button.
The button, yeah.
This one? Yep. Can you all hear me? Okay, thank you. Okay, my name is Mona Leek, I live at 3231 Lord Circle. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I'm here tonight to speak to the Northridge pilot. I have a couple of points that I'd like to make quickly. Number one, I'm absolutely, I said absolutely, opposed to giving tax incentives to apartment developers, and there are at least four more coming down the road that you'll have to address. I expressed this opposition last week to the school board and to the county commissioners. I have absolutely nothing against these developers. Uh, they're good community members, and I expressed that last week when I spoke. I just don't think taxpayers should be subsidizing apartment developments, bottom line. I'm well aware of the pilots of Franklin and Fourth, Memorial Village 1 and 2, and I didn't agree with either of those, or three of them. Last week, Commissioner Cynthia Pick of the county commission board gave some very good information that should be considered tonight before you start putting more taxes on the average, the average taxpayer in this town. She said, "Grand Forks County average household income is $68,450. I checked the state. Average income is $72,949. I then went and looked up our city household income. This is combined, it's $63,838. Our individual income is only $39,225." We have a six, and this is what, um, Mrs. Pick pointed out also, we have a 16- $39,225. We have a six, and this is what Mrs. Pick pointed out also, we have a 16.3 poverty rate in this town. 16.3. And we have, this is a real nugget here. She said, we have the tax, the highest tax rate per person, and she expressed man, woman, and child in the state. Bismarck, Minock individually will pay $48,000 to $49,000. Fargo, of course, has the larger population, they will pay $2,853. Grand Forks, and this is what she said, pays the highest, highest taxes for every man, woman, and child at $5,075. And now you want us to pick up the tab for these apartment developments. Pile on. And I, I'm just saying, we can't afford any more taxes. And more importantly, I don't think it's our responsibility to subsidize these developments. Okay, I'm going to roll into rezoning because I know we have a lot of speakers here. The main job of the city government is to provide police, fire protection, sewer water, and streets. Next in line, I think of most significance and most important to all of our taxpayers in this community is zoning. This means protecting the sense-
Ms. Leek, there's no zoning on this particular item.
May I just, I have to get up again. May I just finish? I just have a couple of seconds.
We would need you to stick just item 3.2. So if you have a zoning, you have to do toward the zoning part. So we do have to keep it to the tab. Excuse me, sir, you need to be quiet. You're disrupting the meeting.
Okay, so you don't want me to talk just a little bit about this zoning?
If you have rezoning, you'd have to talk about it on that item. That's the only thing.
Okay, if you'd like to do that, I'll just have to get up again, I guess. There are some pertinent things here. Okay, and so I am going to go to my conclusion. And I get to sit down sooner anyway, so that's, that's all right, I guess. But what I, what I'd like to say to all of you here tonight is that I'm asking you, if you took a walk around your ward and you talked to people, what do you think they'd say about this? Everybody's busy. It's, and it's hard to keep up with everything that's going on. But if you actually just started strolling down your ward and, and started asking people, do you think you, you can handle some more taxes? What do you think they'd say? So when you vote this evening, think of your neighbors. Think of the average taxpayer in this community. And who you represent, who voted for you to stand up for them. So I'm asking you tonight to vote no. And I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Ms. Leek. Any others?
I have a question before we continue. I thought that our current rules for public speaking stand until August 1. And so could I get some clarification on that? Oh, a public hearing? Okay. They don't have any-
Season comments is when that changes, yeah. So public hearing's different and, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Sorry, please, it's on. You're good to go.
Hi, my name is Mary Capponin and I live on Noble Cove in Grand Forks. And I'm speaking on the Northridge Project. I am opposed to this project for the main reason that these tax incentives should be for business opportunities like a Gristo. I'm all in favor, good job. You have done good things with these developments like that. I'm a, just like Mona, I'm opposed to apartments using the tax incentives. I don't think it's fair. And I just wanted to bring up some points. It hasn't been, that haven't been mentioned tonight. The developer for Northridge originally asked for 20 years, 100% free taxes. And then he agreed to an effective rate of 77% over 15 years. And the reason he was, after a tax incentive is because it was the only way this is feasible. So if the only way it was feasible was 100% for 20 years, why did he go down to 77% for 15? And now you're discussing the school board and the county commission even decreasing that. That doesn't make sense. And then the next thing is, I realize that infill apartments do have a less expensive startup than building outside of an area that's already developed. But these apartments that I've heard about are going to be multiple stories, much different than most of the other apartments in town. They're going to be five and six-story from my understanding. And you brought up many other ones that are coming down the pike. This is going, at the very minimum, we're going to have more students at schools, upgraded fire equipment like ladder trucks, as somebody in the county commission meeting brought up. The people living there are going to use the schools, the streets, fire, ambulance, police, sewer water, and other utilities that we taxpayers will have to foot the bill for, including our portion plus that 77% that this developer. And the other ones coming down the pike, we don't know what those deals will be. But it's kind of overwhelming considering there's multiple coming, all involving residential development. So the next point is, when will this stop? At what point? So somebody mentioned if interest rates get more favorable, but they're going to keep trying to get tax incentives from you guys. The purpose of tax incentives is to create industry and jobs and bring revenue to the town. And I don't see how building these apartments brings revenue other than to the landlord's pockets. And then one other thing before I wind up, can everybody who's opposed here today stand up without talking or making a lot of noise? Then the other point I'm bringing up is, my understanding of a pilot is that it shouldn't be competing with existing businesses. And these are luxury apartments. There's going to be golf simulators, all kinds of amenities offered. We, I'm not aware of what else. And as a former landlord myself, I sold my property, so last year I wasn't a landlord anymore. I would have to pay my taxes on my rental and then the subsidy that this guy is going to get. And he would be my competitor. So that seems grossly unfair to me. And then the final point is, I've lived in other states and these tax incentive projects are not new. They've been going around for 30 years to my knowledge. And in Georgia, where I lived most recently, a lot of those failed before that year, that tax incentive period was over. So these are very risky developments. Admittedly, most of the ones that I was aware of were built in blighted areas. So that was even adding another degree of riskiness. But I still think that they're risky. And that should be taken into account. Like, I've heard it's a win-win, but it's not a win-win for us taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Krosznick, please.
My name is Andrew Krosznick. Am I close enough to the mic here?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay. My name is Andrew Krosznick. I live at 4953 Kern Court. My business, Albatross Indoor Golf Club, is at 2800 South Columbia Road in the Columbia Mall. Thank you for your time this evening. I was here last month and spoke to this matter. There was some discussion after I spoke in regards to what competition is, how this project could resemble competition, how that competition might be monitored. I wanted to address those concerns and points of discussion. I'm told this is my opportunity to share with you all, council members, my perspective as a competitor or a potential competitor. The Northridge Pilot is at odds with North Dakota Century Code 4057.1 as it provides for unfair competition with existing businesses. Those would include other rental property owners. It would include other gym and fitness business owners. And it can include me and my livelihood if they include a golf simulator as an amenity. Yes, one simulator has a major impact on my business, even if that one simulator is only for apartment residents and guests. I'm asking you, council members, to do the right thing this evening and vote to not approve this pilot application. Or at an absolute minimum, ensure this pilot will not compete with my existing business. I know others have and will speak to their areas of competition, their concerns, but right now I have to focus on my specific position. One golf simulator represents 12.5% of my capacity at Albatross. That's huge. I started with only two simulators, took seven years to grow to four simulators, and then after 10 years I made it to eight simulators. But at eight simulators, even just one competing simulator has a major impact on my business. I know this from the impact the one simulator added at Memorial Village has had on my business just this last winter. Yes, the simulator at Memorial Village, or if Northridge would put a simulator in their facility, they're only for the apartment residents and guests. That's a huge portion of my current and potential customers. Northridge has 155 units. That could be 300 to 500 residents possibly. Then look at all the guests that could come over to join them. That's an enormous amount of traffic I'd be missing out on when we're talking about a niche business like mine. I've seen this. It's not just a projection. I know it has had an impact. I wish I would have known about the Memorial Village project fully when it was being drawn up. The notice, two competitors never talked about golf simulators. I had no idea I'd be competing with them, competing against my own tax dollars. I've also seen competition in the non-incentivized realm, where other businesses have added in golf simulators. Some have been only for members, some have been only for residents, some have been for the public. Most have just been one or two simulator additions. They have all, one by one, had a major impact on my business. Those weren't tax incentivized, though, so you didn't see me or hear me complaining to you guys or to any other tax entity. I'm 100% in favor of the free market. I obviously would love to not have to compete with any golf simulator operators in such a niche, limited market. But I fully support people having the ability to compete with me and other businesses. What I do not support, and I'm asking you to not support, is forcing existing businesses like mine to compete with new and expanding tax incentivized businesses, which is what can happen with this Northridge Pilot if approved. Here's a great example as to how this can impact me if they include a golf simulator, or how they can impact other businesses. Northridge built the district. A Facebook post for the district reads, quote, "Amidities include a state-of-the-art gym that will make you cancel your gym membership," end quote. Northridge also built the Boden, which has a golf simulator, and has, has had a significant impact on my business. That's great for Northridge, for the district, for the Boden, and the free market. Again, 100% on board with them being able to do that. But I'm not in support of this proposed project or the multiple other developments proposed to be coming to you next from Dakota Commercial with this one and those ones providing for unfair tax incentivized competition. North Dakota Century Code 4057.1, which we've talked about a lot where these tax incentives are derived from, states, quote, "It is the intent of the Legislative Assembly that political subdivisions and the State Board of Equalization, in their determination of whether the tax exemptions authorized by this chapter shall be granted, shall give due weight to their impact and effect upon existing industry and business, to the end that an unfair advantage shall not be given to new or expanded enterprises, which is to the substantial detriment of existing enterprises," end quote. This includes all tax incentives for new and expanding businesses, including pilot programs, under this chapter of NDCC. I realize you have to rely on your legal counsel, Mr. Gosted. This topic of competition and how this is to be interpreted has not been given much commentary. He did state at the last county commission meeting that the wording is, give due weight. So that is where you come in, to give my concerns due weight, to give other competitors who speak due weight. It also says, to the end that an unfair advantage shall not be given, and to the substantial detriment of existing enterprises. I'm up here telling you it is to that end. If a golf simulator would be included, one by one, one at Memorial Village Hislop, one here possibly with Northridge, one or two more with, with Greenview, or excuse me, one or two more with Dakota Commercial's The Domain, and then maybe 14 more with Greenview living at Ray Richards. We don't even have to make it that far to Ray Richards to possibly put me out of business. You can get to eight or more simulators in town via these tax incentivized projects pretty darn quick. Please don't let the waters be muddied regarding competition as to where we draw the line with these amenities and the level of competition. A washer and dryer provided for tenants is not the same thing. I think we can all agree that having clean underwear accessible in your home is not the same thing as having a golf simulator or other discretionary amenity in your home. Not allowing for these competing amenities, or at least golf simulators, since I am here telling you it is to my substantial detriment, can be and should be written into these pilot agreements if they are going to be approved. I know there's been a lot of discussion around the topic of housing, both regarding availability and affordability. I do have serious concerns regarding the data and objectivity of those discussions. I also have concerns about the intent and application of these pilot programs. But for the sake of your time, for the public's time, and for the sake of my core concerns with this topic, I'd like to remain focused on the topic of competition. Mr. Gosted has provided his legal opinion in relation to the pilot program and the ability to apply it to any project which is defined as any revenue-producing enterprise. That legal interpretation has told you that these are by the book as far as applying to apartments and retail projects. This has not been him telling you they are legal in regards to allowing for unfair competition that is to the substantial detriment of existing businesses like mine. All I have heard, Mr. Gosted, give you as far as legal guidance in relation to this, that you must give due weight to the concerns of competitors. If you believe we have an apartment shortage and our community needs more apartments, it does not mean you can then justify the end via the means of potentially putting me and others out of business. It's not a greater good conversation. It's a matter of giving due weight to my concerns as a competitor who may be put out of business through this and other proposed pilot programs. This is what North Dakota Century Code 4057.1 tells us. If the apartment aspect is going to be overlooked as unfair competition, if what I've brought forward about our vacancy rate and data is going to be dismissed, Albatross and other impacted retail businesses via the provided amenities still need to be considered. The do not compete aspect needs to be contractually included in these tax incentive agreements at a minimum for the golf simulator aspect. Please give due weight and please do the right thing. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Krosznick.
Thank you.
Mr. Pecle, please.
Good evening. It's nice to have, not to be rushed. Good evening, Grand Forks City Councilman Mayor, Shabu Pecle. I'm a business owner at 325 North Washington. Tark LLC is a business focused on transparency, accountability, and responsibility, community governance. Warren Buffett said, more money has been stolen by the tip of a pen than with a gun. This timeless warning reminds us that quiet strokes of bureaucracy decisions can siphon away public resources more effectively than any brazen theft. Today, I stand before to address a pressing concern, the city council's misuse of payment in lieu of taxes, which too often prioritize the interests of private apartment developers in reward at the expense of the Grand Forks taxpayers. Under North Dakota Century Code 40-57.1-03, municipalities like ours may grant partial or complete exemption from taxation on project related to properties or negotiate pilots as an alternative. But this authority comes with the solemn duty. The council must first determine that such incentives are truly in the best interest of municipality and its residents, all its residents. Regrettably, our recent practices fall short of this standard, erasing fiscal responsibility and public trust. Consider the fusionary responsibility enshrined in state law in our city charter. North Dakota Century Code 40-55-26, with deals with the power of the city council and members must manage public resources, prioritizing the public's best interests, not developers or third-party contractors, such as those involving the city attorney and his firm. Our Grand Forks City Home Room Charter, Article 4, empowers the council to contract finances appropriate money and level taxes, only in a way that advances the public good, such as outlined as Code of Ordinance, Chapter 2, which demands transparency, oversight, and all policymaking. Yet in granting pilots such as the recent 50-year sentence for Northridge apartment development, which the school board wisely rejected but left open for negotiation, we've seen a pattern insufficient scrutiny. The city has never hired an independent, experienced consultant to evaluate whether these incentives are necessary, optimal, as inspired by best interest requirement. The city attorney is not impartial, right? The more projects develop, the more fees he generates. He's not impartial. The city has- The city has, I restate it again, has never hired independent, experienced consultant to evaluate whether these incentives are necessary optimal aspired by best interest requirement, right? As soon as I can see, there's twenty to forty million dollars of pilots you've granted, right? Yet you have had a third party that's independent or qualified to judge them. Instead, reliance on developer provider reports such as those at Baker Tilly focus on narrowly on project viability, debt service, and equity returns without the balanced assessment of taxpayer costs, which numerous people have mentioned. This fiscal responsibility, especially when pilots can span twenty years, as noted as the city's own economic development website. Compounding this is a glaring conflict of interest fees generated by third-party legal firms hired by the city for drafting negotiating development agreements. These firms profit directly from volume and complexity of deals approved, creating incentives pushed through the pilots with rigorous challenge. In past cases such as controversial Foo-Fung Corn Wet Mill Project, residents raised concern about overlapping interests between city leaders, economic development corporation, external providers, equing concerns expressed in public letters, Herald reports from 2023. Such entanglements violate the spirit of North Dakota Central Code forty dash one three dash twelve, which subjects officials to prosecution for misconduct and undermining the charter's call for impartial governance. The council must properly document away the following five key factors before granting any approval. Ensuring any decision align with your legal obligations, right? Independent, qualified. But four tests: clearly document whether the project proceeds without the incentive, analyzing alternatives to conform necessity. The most egregious one is Memorial Village one and two. It had excess returns of eighteen percent. You gave them, what, returns exempt pilots fifteen-plus years? Who wouldn't love to have a project receive fifteen-plus return? Fiscal impact analysis: outline net effect on city revenues, including lost taxes, increased service demands, and any offsetting benefits. Your opinion is just that. Are you qualified and independent to give that opinion, Mr. Mayor? The answer is no. Economic benefits projection: detailed job creation, wages, and long-term ROI using verifiable models. I've seen none of this. I have a degree in economics. I've served for over twenty years in various private and public boards, including one SEC reporting. I've been trained to do help with internal audits.
Mr. Beclaire, if you could focus on the item at hand. Thank you.
It's part of the item on hand, sir.
Okay. Please focus on it. You're kind of a little bit getting too far, but we'll get you back on the rails. It's okay. Please continue.
State my qualifications, sir, is relevant to the discussion. Fairness to existing businesses, as a person mentioned before. You could put somebody out of business by your economics incentives. Is that fair? Is that fair to the taxpayers shifting the burden to somebody else? I've seen no economic analysis to this effect. Finally, compliance and alternative review. Confirmed adherence, North Dakota Central Code forty dash fifty side dash one, and the city charter, when comparing pilot levels and denial scenarios for maximum public benefit. I'm just amazed at how much money you give away without any third-party economic analysis. Baker Tilly's narrow report is twenty-five-hundred dollars that tells the story the developer wants to sell, to tell, excuse me, tell and sell. Where is the city? Tell you what, how about this, Mr. Mayor? The previous pilots will offer the following incentive. I keep my word. I'll hire and pay for my firm, independent, qualified, to let you know how much money you gave away you didn't have to, right? From the previous pilots like those to Memorial Village, Enclave, et cetera. I keep thirty percent. You keep, we'll find the rest from the people responsible for not doing proper economic analysis. It's egregious what you've done. With that in mind, sir, by ignoring these, we're not just misusing pilots, we're betraying taxpayers. I urge the council to pause approvals, mandate independent reviews, and prioritize transparency. Let's wield the pen for the people, not against them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beclaire. Mr. Cogger, please.
Yep. Thank you. Mayor, council people, good evening. I'll try to make this as quick as possible. My opinion is taking money from the taxpayers and giving it to private developers is just simply wrong. We need jobs long before we need apartments, before we need somebody to go and give somebody money for apartments. Who's going to go in these apartments? The city, the Grand Forks County, and the school district have no business in the private development. Whether you're trying to lead it in the right direction, it never happens. It never does. We never got anywhere with the housing as long as it was worked on. Never went anywhere. The supply and demand system has worked very well for well over a hundred years. Why do we have to change it? I don't get it. So now the city of Grand Forks is proposing to change it because the developers are telling us, oh, we can't, we can't possibly build this product without your help, right? So for reference, for the man that was just up here, Memorial Village got twenty-two million dollars. Across the street, they got nine-point-one, right? Of taxpayer funds. And we want to give away more money. This is ridiculous. This is our money. You are to be the stewards of our money, not give it away. How is building five apartment buildings giving up a hundred million dollars? Is that correct? Anyone? Mr. Phelan, would that be correct? They ask for all the jobs coming down, the five jobs coming down, it's a hundred million dollars, correct? No reply? Okay. It's a hundred million bucks. Hundred million dollars to the taxpayers in Grand Forks? You're going to stick them for a hundred million bucks? Come on. That's ridiculous. Everybody in this room works their butt off, right? Everybody works hard. But you're gonna, in your wisdom, you're gonna take our taxpayer dollars and you're gonna give them to these separate developers. Sorry. I mean, simply if you read the Grand Forks Herald yesterday, or I read the Grand Forks Herald yesterday, it was quite clear what position Grand Forks County is in. They are broke, right? Maybe not dead broke, but they're pretty damn close. Is it allowable to say damn? Sorry. Anyway, the county is trying to figure out right now who they can keep, you know, can they keep all their people? Can they keep all their benefits? Can they keep all their positions? Probably not. But over here in the city, we're going to give away a pile of money. I don't understand it. As the steward of our money, I expect that everybody is going to be responsible with And as far as vacancy rates, every meeting that I have been to, the vacancy rate has continually changed. First, it's two percent, two percent, two percent from the city. I have no idea where you got that information. I've been doing this for twenty-eight years. I have never seen go from one quarter at six percent and drop down to under one percent the following quarter. It's impossible. May not, maybe not impossible if you bring a bunch of people into town, such as eight hundred to a thousand airmen. But if you're saying it's three-point-five, then you better add two points to it because you're not asking any of the independents and you're only counting, well, actually, you did your own survey again. Northridge paid for the first survey that on eight-hundred-and-seventy-six units, which is, in my opinion, a biased sampling. You've got eight-hundred-and-seventy-six units out of eleven thousand? And we're taking that information and giving away a hundred million dollars? That does not make sense to me. I don't know if it makes sense to everyone, but I sure don't want to be writing checks. And I like these developers. I like the people. But I do not like them that much that I'm going to give them my money. It's ridiculous. It truly is. Why are we subsidizing this? I don't understand. There's no common sense to this, in my opinion. And that's the only opinion I can voice, is my opinion. But I believe it's a lot of people's opinions. It is a lot of people's opinions, so don't kid yourself. Nobody likes this. No one likes it. Yeah. You stuck thirty-one million bucks in the last two years, the county can't pay their bills. It's just, it's just common sense. What is going on? You can't spend all our money. It's not what we intended for you to do, was to give Mr. Miscavige. I'm not picking on Mr. Miscavige, but it's not my intention to give him six-point-four million dollars to build a building. I would appreciate it if you'd give me six-point-four million. I'm sure everyone in here would. But we're not asking for that. You don't need to reinvent the wheel, all right? Supply and demand is very simple. Bring jobs, you'll get apartments. It's been doing this for fifty, a hundred years or longer, right? I mean, it's, like you said, it's not rocket science. It really, truly isn't. And there's no way that vacancy rates can go from six percent in one quarter down to one percent. That's just, excuse me for a second. Okay, the original Northridge application included an application that was paid for by Northridge with eight-hundred-and-seventy-six units, which is, in my opinion, very biased, again, sampling when you have over eleven thousand units in town. But that's the whole precipice of which this, all this thing started, right? We're gonna give TIF money to the developers, we're gonna say that the vacancy rate right now is one-point-three to two percent. We've been doing this, we have been doing this for a long time. And the sale deal on the one-point-three to two percent vacancy rate is a complete farce. I know, because we manage a ton of apartments. But you didn't come to us, to talk to us about any apartments. I'm sure it was Dakota Commercial in Northridge and Oxford, right? Or no answer. Okay. Anyway, my opinion is you guys need to back off this thing until you figure it out. The county is broke. How do you expect the school district to come up with money? This, you don't need to incentivize apartments. Developers will come when the apartments are needed. It has happened like this year after year after year. I'm not inventing anything either. It's not anything different than what goes on in a day, on a daily basis. Nobody's come to look, I mean, you guys are putting up, what, eight hundred units? Two-hundred-and-forty-thousand-dollar units, I might add, all high-end, luxury units. Because as was just said, the average income of a household in Grand Forks is sixty-three-thousand dollars, right? How many people, average people in Grand Forks County could afford to live in a twenty-four-hundred-dollar unit? I don't know. But this is Grand Forks County money, Grand Forks County taxpayer money. I think you're being reckless with it, and I think if you go forward with this, this will be even worse. Giving away, what nobody ever says here is, I've looked on the city site, I've looked all over for your two percent vacancy rate, does not exist. I have not found it. I've looked in every area in the Apartment Association information. There's nothing there. And why wouldn't you use the Apartment Association anyway? You've got eight thousand units in there. I mean, why would you go to a biased special eight-hundred-and-seventy-six-unit deal? Was it just to get to the one percent? I'm assuming it is, because that's the only way it works. This is, this is a travesty, and I hope that you all, please come to your senses and vote against this TIF money. We simply can't afford it. I don't know what anybody here makes, doesn't matter. But as was said before, there's almost seventeen percent of the people that live in Grand Forks County are at the poverty level. And if they own a home, will they be able to face an increase? And this is the first increase that you're going to dish out. Six-point-four million. That's just the start. According to all the information that's printed out, it's a hundred million dollars, which does not include the thirty-two million that you just spent on Memorial Village of ours and across the street. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cogger. Anybody else on item three-point-two?
Can you make this one?
Yeah, just till I close the public hearing portion. Oh, you got one more? Just in time.
Hello, Mayor. Hello, Council. My name is Veronica Hansen. I live at fifty-one oh-two Ella Circle, and I am an artist in the city. What I wanted to talk about was that when I hear all of this, you guys talking about taxing incentives given to apartment development, I feel extremely hurt and angry. We have a mental health crisis going on right now. I don't see people affording rent, mortgage, if they can't heal their mental health. You can't heal, you can't pay. You got to apply for government, federal, all these, all these big things. You got to apply, right? You got to get help. You got to heal so you can pay your bills and live. Why, why is it so hard for you guys to see how mental health in our community is being We all know what happened, and it is being ignored. Holmberg, I said it.
Mr. Mayor, we're talking about a pilot program today.
Yes, and it's because I want you to consider, please, switching. Don't put these tax incentives towards building when the people that are suffering don't have the help they need to pay for these buildings that you are paying for, we, we are paying for. I cannot. I, I have to apply for disability because I have severe PTSD. I am a survivor, and I'm an artist, and I am trying so hard to make or help in any way I can to heal our community. But when you're using our taxes towards building more, how then do you expect the ones that are suffering to pay? Pay for these homes, pay for these apartments? I'm just so confused, sir, and I wanted to ask, is mental health being considered?
Definitely, and this, part of this, I don't know that they're being connected, but we understand your point, so we appreciate you.
Okay, so I just want to say the connection is if you don't have healthy mental health, you cannot pay your rent, you cannot pay your bills, you have to apply for services to help you. And right now, we all know, too, in the media, the services that are provided for people And right now, we all know too, in the media, the services that are provided for people like that that are suffering is being cut. So if you're providing... We're giving our money, taxes, tax incentives to people to build. How does that make sense? When people that are suffering are getting cut the help that we need to survive? I wanted to ask, could you clarify? Help me to understand. Please.
Okay. Thank you. Do you have anything further? We're gonna discuss after, so...
Okay.
Yep.
Yes. Well, that was it. I just wanted to make sure everyone knew, mental health.
Thank you. Any further comments on item three point two? All right, we are gonna close the public hearing portion, and we'll open up to the council for comments. Miss Lunskey, you're up.
All right. Maureen, can I put you on the spot? So I... We're not cutting checks to any developers, right? So is this how... This is how I see it. If you could tell me if I'm wrong. So we have this plot of land, and nothing's on it. We're getting very minimal taxes, correct? But if we put an apartment building on it, and we give them a reduction of taxes for five years, then on year six, we're gonna get full tax rate on this apartment build.
Mayor Bocinski, councilperson, Lunskey, members of council. So attached on the agenda item is the impact analysis. So if you look at that, there's three pieces to that. There's a summary in five-year increments of additional revenue that would come in from the project. And then there's a graphic that shows what property tax would come in, or what would they pay based on the land as it exists versus if the development happens. And then you can see the net gain in a graphic form. So if you're interested in pulling that up, it's called impact analysis on there. And then it's in spreadsheet form. So you're correct. They still pay full income tax on the current value. Where there is a tax incentive is with the development, they're gonna pay a certain percent of the property tax on the increased value coming from the development, depending on, you know, where you are in the five, ten, fifteen-year period. But the graphic displays it probably the best on there. That shows the money that we get in with no project versus the money that would come in for all entities if the project were to move forward.
Ms. Berg, please.
To clarify that. So we're still receiving the same amount of taxes throughout that entire time, and then later, or we'll receive additional funds.
That's correct. No... No... They do not get any money back. They pay full amount on what the current tax bill is. It's just if the development happens, it's from the increased... Increased value due to the development that there is an increment. So that graphic probably displays it best what I'm talking about in terms of a picture.
So they're talking about a decrease in future revenues. You're not taking or giving them any money. They're just paying less than they would have on the project. But if the project doesn't happen, there's nothing new. There's no checks being written to them. I know that was... The lines were blurred a little bit there, but...
A little.
I think completely blurred, but... All right. Any further, Miss Lunskey?
I just have one more thing. I've been shopping for an apartment for my college student, and it is hard to find a col... Or an apartment right now. So I can't confirm if it's one percent or four percent. All I know is it's very difficult.
Thank you, Ms. Berg.
Mr. Gossed, can you weigh in on do weight and what we need to consider with that?
You can consider all the comments. That's precisely why we have a public hearing, is to give everybody an opportunity to weigh in, make their case. I do it every day. And the... And this political body gets to decide what weight they wanna give to any particular factor. I'm not gonna be the filter as to what you should consider and what you shouldn't consider. That's what the public hearing is for.
All right. President Sandy?
So, Ms. Dorsted, when do... When do we make the county broke?
I... Yeah.
No, I'm sorry. Let's call that rhetorical. At what point do the... Does the people out in the audience... When do they get their increased property taxes if this pilot goes forward?
Mayor Bocinski, President Sandy, members of the council, I think, you know, the efforts that are being made here is to grow the tax base so it helps the residential, you know, tax bill overall be spread. So with increased value, we're trying to bring more value in total from the property tax to help out entities like the county. So with the... If there is no... And that's where we use Baker Tilly with the third-party financial analysis to do the but-for test. So what they do is but for the tax incentive, the project wouldn't happen. And that's what the graphic in the spreadsheet is based on. So no property tax without development versus if the development happens, you might have to wait five, ten, fifteen years to get the full amount. But even if it's a ninety percent in the first ten, you're receiving that additional ten percent that you wouldn't get today. So it brings in more revenue to the tax base.
So to Mr. Cogger's point, maybe this actually is rocket science, because I don't think we're doing a good job explaining it to people. The city... If we pass this pilot, there isn't an additional bill to one single taxpayer in our community. They don't pay one additional nickel in property taxes to the city, to the county, to the school district, to the park district. There isn't one additional utility bill. One penny of your money doesn't have to go cover a utility bill at this apartment building or anywhere we've provided a pilot. There is no additional cost to the taxpayers of Grand Forks at all. Nothing. None. Zero. And everyone that's walked up to the podium that says we're giving away taxpayer dollars, I'm not saying they're lying. I'm saying they don't understand how it works. All we're doing is providing an incentive for a builder to build and get a reduced cost in their property taxes. Nobody else is picking up the tab for it. They're just paying less. Hopefully, that's clear. I don't know how to make it any more clearer than that. Mayor, do you have any other?
It's future rev... I don't... Yeah. And a way to explain it, you're claiming that money that they're gonna pay in the future is already yours. It hasn't... It doesn't exist yet until the building gets built. Once the building gets built, they have more revenue coming in. They already have fire, police protection roads. There's no increased cost, so everything that comes in is a net gain for the city.
The snowplow already goes by that empty lot. It already happens. There is no incremental additional cost. Thank you, Mayor.
Ms. Berg, did you have something else?
I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay. Please.
I move to... Move towards negotiations.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Got a motion from Ms. Berg, second from Mr. Friedhofs. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign.
Aye.
Motion carries six to one with Osowski dissenting. Thank you.
Three point three, public hearing and second reading of ordinance amending the zoning map to rezon from UD University District to R4, multiple-family residence, high-density district located twenty-nine, twenty, Fifth Avenue North.
Thank you. Mr. Brooks?
Mayor can give a quick overview.
Yeah, why don't you give us a quick, so we can get back on track here where this one's at?
Sure. Absolutely. So this is in... On the Cambridge Avenue and Fifth Avenue. It's in the UD District right now. It's north of the Newman Center on campus. The request that is before us is to make this a R4, which is a high-density district. But I'll explain a little bit of what they're requesting. It's gonna be a five-plex on that site. Currently, the UD District permits single-family, two-family dwellings, along with fraternities, sororities, and other UND-type housing. But in this case, a five-plex with five units connected is not permitted. When we looked at the size of the... Of the site, what could be permitted to go there is duplexes, and they could fit three duplexes on the site, which would be a total of six units. This particular developer is requesting the rezoning because he's looking to do a five-plex on that site. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, hopefully to assist.
Sounds good. Ms. Osowski?
Yeah, I don't really have any questions. I know I received some email, a little bit of pushback on this. But I guess the way that I'm kind of looking at it is that currently, and please let me know if I'm wrong, but currently where it stands with the zoning with the U-zone, they could put up, what, like a... I think they can go up six stories? Is that right, Mr. Brooks? So they could put a lot larger of a unit on this property than what the developer is actually asking to put on that property. Also, it is three different lots, so if that developer wanted to, even under the current... If they wanted... If they didn't like R4, if the neighborhood really pushed against the R4 zoning, he could put up a whole additional unit. So we would increase the density of that population even more just by him breaking up those lots. So I... And I do not think that this really changes the density of this area. I took a look at the pictures of the units that were presented. I believe they had double-car garages, and then they would have some behind the garage parking. So they should have enough parking for all of the bedrooms that are on this property. I like this a lot better than a giant apartment complex, a lot better than even them throwing up a sorority that could really... Or a fraternity that could maybe, you know, impact that area a little bit more. So I know that I've received some unhappy people, but if you really look at it, if we don't change the zoning, we could be in a lot worse situation when we talk about the density of the population. And even if we don't agree with the R4, I believe that Oxford could go... I believe that's who this is, right? Is that who that is?
That...
I believe Oxford could even put up additional units. So... But I do have one question. Is this all that's gonna go on this property?
Yeah. With the councilman Osowski... Councilperson Osowski, sorry. In this case, the five-unit would take up that whole site. And so with the parking required and the green space requirements, that would be the extent... That would be the development of the lot.
Okay, so there's nothing... Because someone brought up, oh, they could put up businesses, and they could do all this. But this development is gonna take up all three of those lots, correct? So there is not gonna be additional room for anything else, correct?
Correct. Yep.
Okay. Is... And this is all that the developer is gonna put on this property?
On this property. Correct.
Okay. I guess I... I'm really against changing the density of a population, but I do not see this as changing the density at all. I'm a fan of more of the townhome-style buildings, so yeah. I know we have to do a public hearing, but...
Yeah, I'll do a public hearing, and we can go for motions. Any other comments before we open the public hearing? All right, let's... Why don't we do that? We'll get that out of the way first. So we'll go to item three point three. Anybody here to speak on item three point three? Please.
I was following your point, and I thought, oh, good, she sees what we're talking about. And it's like, but you went that direction. I don't understand. Okay. I live on Hamlin. Linda Olson, four oh-four Hamlin Street. I've been there since nineteen ninety-one. And on our street, actually, in our little area there, Columbia, Stanford, University, the six, our street have the most homeowners still living in their home. And then as some of the other streets kind of had losses. So, you know, but we're still semi-strong. We were at fifty percent, but now we're... But in our area, okay, what we've done is we've worked to strengthen our neighborhood. We have three churches. We have sororities and fraternities. We have homeowners that live in their home, or the family members live in their home. And we have single home or standalone homes that are rented out. So right now, it's manageable. You know, there's been some turbulent times, trust me. When we moved out there in early night... There were some turbulent times. But right now, it's very manageable. We work with people who are renters in a home. It's a lot easier to work with when they have a home and a green space parking. We work with our neighbors. We work with the churches. We work with the university. In fact, the people that live out there, own out there, are either current or retired professors or retired state employees who worked at UND. So anybody out there bought because we're connected to it. So we support UND, right? We also wanna keep the kids safe. And I say kids loosely, I'm sorry. Keep them safe, right? Sorority, fraternity, yep. Infamous three in the morning, domestic out in the street, yep. But we're there. And so what we try to do is mentor or show what... As adults in a community, when you're part of the community, what you do. There's a domestic, you call, but you also go out there. You make sure people are safe. If there's toxic addiction stuff going on with alcohol, somebody's passed out and not moving, you know, you deal with it. You don't just walk by. We make connections with parents when they come, you know? We have... Close to us, we have a gentleman that, when he was a student at UND, rented that house. Now his son has come and renting that house. So it's... We have longevity with people there. But anyway, the nice thing is, it's a neighborhood. The kids that grow up in there are safe, and we do have families with kids. But we do try to make sure the students are safe. One of the things... My hearing aids doing some funny. One of the things that Burgum and the city did a while back was try to make some... Something to downtown or some gosh thing, right? But they did this elaborate plan on University Avenue. And part of that was also working with the group that was dealing with, like, maybe house parties and save, you know, people getting from one place to another is safe. So they designed University Avenue to be safe, you know, as far as the walkways, the lighting, the spacing, there's patrolling. So when... And let's be honest, after ten PM at night, it's students moving around, right, on campus from east to west, west, east, wherever. But that was designed to do that. Now if we... And then in our little streets, we have houses, single houses, right? So we don't... We're good. But if you start putting apartment buildings in these streets, then you've kind of dismissed what all that money went for, for that safety, as far as I'm concerned. Because then we're back to what used to be when we went there in the nineties, early nineties, dark streets, people everywhere. You know, it was not safe, let's put it that way. There were a lot of people you'd find in the back alley, you know, whatever. But it's the neighborhood. And we support each other, students, and the people that live there, the people that come to the... Now I'm getting dry, sorry. I do wanna say that, yes, parking was a challenge. Parking's always a challenge. You have a lot of workforce out there. Some people choose or can't afford to buy a parking pass, so they park on the street. It's still manageable. Problem is, we used to be a bus route, so we used to have two or three nights of cleaning in the wintertime. We're no longer a bus route, so now we have one night of cleaning. That means street... Cars have to be off the streets, right? And to your point about parking, okay, there's a four-bedroom house rented out. And during the daytime, during the semester, there's ten cars parked in the back. And there can be two to four cars in their front yard. So at four bedrooms, and that's what that proposal is, is four bedrooms times five. Now, where are all those people gonna park? Because, trust me, they're not parking unless they give up their whole backyard. And they're giving up half their front yard because that's what happens. So, you know, that is an issue. And then if you have winter with the snow removal or a storm, it can be a real mess out there. Anyway, so I'm... I don't know. I'm trying to keep it short. I'm not gonna read stuff. It's boring. I don't know how you guys can sit, and it's bad for your back. Let me tell you that. Okay? I can't sit that long. Okay. I need water. water.
Sorry.
Trust me, it'd be worth it for me to have water. Sorry about that. I did want to make the point that the zoning meeting that we went to, was the first time we had an opportunity to comment on this. I mean, we're living our life. We're having a little bit of a break because the summer's, you know, the summer, there's not as many students on campus. And then get a letter, and now we got to go, and it's like, what do you mean they're going to rezone? You know, so it's like, people might be gone at conferences, people might be gone on vacations, or a small number of people. We lost a lot of people during COVID. But now we had one opportunity to make comments, and it's like, now we're back here in front of you guys, and you're going to vote on this. And it's like, no, please do not rezone this. Because what will happen is, those little properties that are owned with, maybe they own the property here and owning here, once they do that, then they can tear those down and start building more. So it's going to be more apartments out there. It's not just a one-time thing. They can say that, but they own the property, then once one is in, it's a done deal. That's my point, my feeling. Because they own a lot of property out there, and they're just waiting. Already, there's a sorority house that's going to be apparently torn down to make a parking lot for UND. That's very sad. I'm sorry. It's very sad to see that. But that wasn't my house, but my house is already gone, actually. But it's very sad to see that. I mean, it's like, the other point is, we're part of a historical neighborhood. It's have a little plaque out there. We are part of UND's history, and the history of Grand Forks. And the people that live out there that, you know, whether they're even just renting, we try to make bonding with them. So they are reinvesting in Grand Forks. They're reinvesting in UND, so they'll, they'll come back. They'll send their son back when they go to school. Instead of just come, blow it out, they don't care, it's old, it's crappy, and move on. You know, they're not part of the community. But in our neighborhood, we try to make them part of our community. Fraternities are, are fun. We've made some good strides there. It can be challenging. They're like, who's this old lady? Well, I didn't use to be old. Okay, that's fine. I'm sorry. But we, we, I don't know. I don't know how to strongly tell you, we do not want this rezoned. Because when, Ashley, come on out, and I'll walk with you. Because you have just a couple of blocks left that are just homes, and a couple of blocks that are all fourplexes or sixplexes maybe, you know, and they're separated, but it's, you know, there's a division. Once you take UD and make it a R4, then people will be finding themselves with a lot of apartments in there. And it's, it's not a lot of apartments, but it's a small number. So it's not going to, you know, make a niche in what you guys are talking about. Oh, yeah, right. I don't know who, I don't know who's going to move into Grand Forks. Students come and then they go. You know, people can't afford the apartments that are being built and offered out. So I don't, you know, I don't get it. I'm old about my house, and I'm very glad I did. So anyway, I, I won't keep you guys up, but I, but doing this, an apartment like that or a townhouse, do, you know, it's like, it would have been nice to have a conversation with the developer and the planning, instead of just all of a sudden us having to defend ourselves, which is what this is. You know, it's like, okay, this is what we're doing. And it's like, the city seems like, yeah, that's a good idea. And we're coming and saying, no, what, can you talk to us? Show us the picture. The picture or the plan is so ambiguous. It's like, you know, you don't, you don't want to know where my mind thinks it's going to end up. Because once it gets the green flag, they can do anything. Then, then there's no limitation to what's going on. And that's not really fair to do to the people who've invested. The people that live in my block have been there longer than I have. You know, they bought their house when they came to UND to become a professor. So, you know, we're, I don't know, it's just sad to see that happen. But I do appreciate your time, and I'm, I'm, I don't know how to, you know, have you see the light, but it's a neighborhood. If you all live in a neighborhood where you don't have any apartment buildings, imagine coming home and getting a letter, and somebody's going to build an apartment building in your block. How does that change your neighborhood dynamics? Think about that. Because it does. Even though we're in the UD district, you know, and fraternity sororities, but we've worked at that. You know, we had to work with that, you know, as far as, and with the university. And with people who are renting houses, when you have 20 cars there instead of, you know, for, for, for four bedrooms or whatever. It's, but it's manageable now. That's an important point, you know. So, anyway, but thank you for listening, and I appreciate, and if you have any questions, or if you want to come on down, I'll walk you through the neighborhood. And I'm sure some of you are familiar with it, but I do appreciate your consideration to not rezone this. So we just have a little piece of our life left there, so, piece of our blocks left. So, thank you.
Thank you. Don't forget your water. All right, anyone else on item 3.3? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing portion, and then we'll open up to Councilwoman Osowski, please.
Yeah, I have some questions. If we do change the zoning, is the contractor allowed to not build what he told us he was going to build?
He would be permitted to do what would be permitted in the R4. So this R4 would allow for certain, I, I don't know if he could fit anything more than a five-plex on that, if that's what you're asking. He could maybe do a six-plex.
No, like even what happens if he didn't want to, just, I, I don't know, just anything different than what we're seeing. Is he allowed to build? Could he put up a giant apartment building?
This, this site wouldn't allow for anything, because he would still have to do parking, his off-street parking has to be provided onsite. He cannot build a apartment building and then say, I'm doing parking with the university across the street. He's got to provide the onsite parking for this development. And so that's why I, I hesitate to say it's going to go any higher, because I don't think anybody can build anything more and still meet the green space, and, as well as the, provide the parking.
Okay. Is there a different zoning category that would satisfy his needs and their neighbors' needs?
Well, I know, certainly the, the neighborhood, and I've talked to a few of them, and, and they're pretty passionate. They have a, they're, they're really trying, there's a few of them, for sure, trying to hold on to single-family homeownership in that neighborhood. And, and there is some too that want to hold on to a, a design element in their neighborhood to fit that older style, I'll say, university-style collegiate. And we do not have a district that does architectural to keep to some of that. In terms of a mesh between, I thought this was the, the request to go to a five-plex, I looked at it as total number of units, and I thought the reduced unit would be of benefit to that neighborhood. I looked at the massing of the building to the west, which was the sorority that's to the west, and then the Newman Center to the south. And I, I think she's right. I think kitty-corner to the southwest is going to go away potentially, but I'm just not sure. City doesn't have a lot of say in that. But I think it fits that, that area, and would be one, one less unit overall. So I think it fits that, but I don't think we're going to get homeownership in that area. I think it probably likely will be a rental.
Understood. Thank you.
Any further comments, Ms. Lunskey, please?
So are these the five units, they are for rent, not for sale?
In talking with the developer, I'm, I'm certain they're going to be for rent.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Veen, please.
Just a quick question. You, you would get your five-plex, or you would get six duplexes, individual units into three buildings then?
Yeah, three duplexes, two units each, six total units.
And how many bedrooms would the, would the duplexes typically be?
We didn't get very far into that, but I assume that they would probably do a, a four, four-bedroom. That's usually what they'll, they tend to max that out as much as possible just due to the, we limit a unit to four people not related by blood or marriage.
So you would have potentially 24 living units in the three duplexes?
Potentially, yes.
Compared to 20 in the five, in the five-plex?
Correct.
So you would have more density potential? They, they can build that right now, right? They don't even have to ask to do the duplex.
Yeah, that's, that's under the current zoning, correct.
And my last question is, because I, I do believe in the property rights with, with zoning. We've only had one person here tonight. What are we hearing from the rest of the adjacent residents?
P&amp;Z did have a few others, and I, I would say they were similar to Ms. Olson's comments that you heard, that were at the planning and zoning as well. I think there was one other from the neighborhood, maybe that came up at P&amp;Z. I did speak to one other on the phone, and that were probably within that 800 feet. But I would say the majority in that area, 800 feet around, I, I do think it's majority probably of rentals.
Say that again?
They're probably the majority within 800 feet of this unit are rentals. Other than, I think that furthest east road probably has the most single-family homeownership.
Mr. Brooks, what was the planning and zoning vote on that, this item? I know they took a much deeper dive in it.
I, I would have to look. I think it was in your packet, and I just didn't print that sheet, but I...
I think it, motion record, second Sandy, motion carried unanimously.
Unanimously, thank you.
All right, Mr. Igoe.
This lot's been vacant since, what, 2010-ish?
The northern one has been vacant probably longer than that. I think the southern lot was, like, right along Fifth was 2020, I believe. University had a house on it. I don't know if it was occupied that whole time, but 2020 is when they tore it down.
And then there's another lot, I believe a block farther west, that is, used to have a duplex or two on it as well.
Very, very much.
On Fifth and, and Harvard. I guess I'm, I understand what Ms. Olson's stating. I think Hamlin Street has the predominant amount of actual owner-occupied houses within it. But if I recall correctly, Harvard, or Cambridge is, is significantly more rentals.
Cambridge, they're also...
Yep. And so I understand that if we don't rezone this, they could build something that's bigger without any changes right now. If we do rezone it, they could only build up to a certain amount. And so, to me, we're actually maybe restricting a little bit more of what they can build, which is something that I'd be in favor of, to somewhat match that neighborhood, and also do some infill development through there, so.
Is that a motion, or?
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve.
I second.
A motion to approve, second for Ms. Osowski. Any further comment? All right, seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Aye.
Six to one, it would pass with Veen dissenting. All right, we've been going about three hours and 18 minutes, so I was going to see if the council wanted to take a short break.
I would like to motion for a 15-minute recess.
A five-minute recess.
Ten, come on, ten, ten.
All right, we'll go, do a short recess. We've got a motion for a short recess. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second for Lunskey. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're on recess.
Close they are to the, uh, South Washington and Forty-seventh. Let me talk about the two issues that I really want to address, um, which is the density and the height issue. When you think of density and more than doubling the density than what the current requirements allow, and you think of 150 units, one, two, three bedroom. Even if there's just one couple that's living in a one-bedroom apartment or a two-bedroom, they generally would have two vehicles because they're going in different directions for work. If you've got three students that are living in a three-bedroom better, you've got three more vehicles there. So just as a low-ball estimate, we're probably looking at an additional 250 to 300 vehicles, trying to use that ingress egress of those two outlets. Plus, on the other side, Eleventh, you have Choice, you have Icon, and recently Starbucks opened up. So you have that. So there's a lot of traffic in that very short distance. And because of that short distance to that intersection of Forty-seventh and also Washington, where the traffic light is, to put another traffic light, which is probably a half a block away, well, when you think of that long block, it's probably a fourth of the distance until you get down to Cherry, you would have even more congestion to put up a traffic light there. And currently, the people from the southeast corner of the city, that's a major traffic area for them to cross over Washington and to go to work on the other side of that. So here you currently have congestion anyway when it's in the morning and such. And then you add all those vehicles coming out of this apartment complex, the domain, plus you've got people coming out of Choice and all of that. It gets to be an extremely congested area. And with that, with open enrollment, we have lots of kids who are on their bikes or walking, cross over Washington, go down that street, come from the south end because they go to South Middle School. So it becomes a safety hazard. And an increased safety hazard when you're building something of that density right there in that particular location. Now, that's just currently what's proposed, that's on the table now, along with these existing structures. In the future, Hugo's, of course, wants to build there in that southeast corner. And when you take a look at the southern portion of that parcel, 50% of that southern portion are parking spots. They have proposed a grocery store, catering, and an event venue. All of those parking spots would have vehicles in there, they hope, when there's an event there. So you compound that tiny little area where the only two ingress and egress, all the number of vehicles that are using those two outlets just does not make sense to increase the density in that area. It just, uh, you know, basic premise of planning and location theory, because that's my area with my, uh, degrees, is to enhance the landscape of the community that you build in. So that is definitely not enhancing the landscape of the community. The second issue that I would like to talk about is the height requirement. It's still light out, so we can take a look through this window here. From what you can see, that's five stories high. There's still, I think, another story on top of that. So they want to go to 65 feet in height. When you take a look at our neighborhood, that buffer that Mr. Burke related to of the two rows of twin homes, townhomes, they have a six-foot fence. And then that, on the other side of the six-foot fence, you've got a 65-foot building. That's what it's going to be when you look out your door. The next, the first cul-de-sac there is Pine's Court. I went up and down the neighborhood there, talking to residents before the Planning and Zoning Commission. As I sat on their porches, and I said, "Take a look at that. You've still got another 50% of that building that's going to block the end of your cul-de-sac." So you have no view whatsoever. It totally takes away the view. And living on Forty-Ninth, also, it's going to inhibit the viewing. With that height, there's also a privacy and security concern. When you take a look at a building that is close to your backyard, and when you're up to 65 feet high in elevation, all they have to do is look out their window, and they see you in your backyard, whether, we've got some up ground, uh, above-ground pools in some of the backyards, anybody who's sunbathing, all the kids that are playing. And in today's world, unfortunately, it's not, every neighborhood isn't safe, every city isn't safe. Who knows who's peering out those windows and seeing, "Oh, look at all those little kids in that." It bothers me that individuals can look right into your, your neighborhood, can look through your windows so close to see. They don't even need binoculars, but they could see into your windows for those that live really close to that. I don't think anybody on that council, or anybody behind me, would want to live in a location where that was what your view was, just a few feet away from you, and that blocked you in from sunlight and everything else. If property owners that are very adjacent to that, their property values are not going to increase. Who would want to purchase a home where that was their view, and they couldn't see sunsets anymore? They might not see sun by four o'clock in the afternoon, depending on certain times of the year. It would be dark in that area, shaded all the way down the street. So again, when you build to enhance the landscape of the community, when you do that, you increase property values. In this case, that would not be the case. Property values are going to decrease. That decreases your tax base. Even renters, there are a few units that, when they came up for sale in those twin homes, townhomes, um, the Hugo individual purchased them, so he rents a couple of them out. As a renter, I would want to renegotiate my lease, because now I didn't, don't have what I initially paid for as far as the backyard and view and privacy and all that. You know, so that value gets decreased for renters to pay. So I, you know, bottom line, the quality of life definitely will decrease for many residents, and the value of their homes will decrease. And to build something of that height that is so close to residential, and even close to Forty-seventh, when you drive by it and you take, "Okay, there's going to be a building that's 65, up to 65 feet high," it doesn't even fit in that community. Something that's five stories high needs to be having some land around it, so people can have views and some, you know, you don't put it right next to a very condensed neighborhood. Everything that's been out, the tax incentives is not part of the result, well, it's part of the rezoning, but it's, um, because also the domain, they initially started with 100% for 20 years, now it's the 90, 80, 60. I don't think we should be in favor of a tax incentive for them. I agree that, um, we shouldn't subsidize them, supply and demand, definitely should be the main, uh, premise here. And I hope that developers build things that sort of fit the area. I'm not opposed to probably an apartment building there, but not something that's five stories high. It just doesn't fit the neighborhood, and I would bet money for each of you that you would feel the same way with that. Just two more things that I want to mention. It was said in the staff report that came out after the, uh, developer meeting at Choice. I went to that. We did get a postcard in the mail about that, so I went. And then also in this staff report, it said that letters were sent out to those individuals on June 23rd. I did not get it. Several people in the neighborhood, our household, didn't get it. Several people in the neighborhood never got any kind of a letter. But yet, it was indicated that the same, when you go online and read the protocol, the same listing is given to the developers as was given, you know, sent out for the planning and zoning meeting. So when I went around the neighborhood, many people didn't know of the issue, because they hadn't been notified of that. So I think that can be problematic, that's something that needs to be changed in the I hope you don't take it in the wrong sense, but, um, Mayor Bochensky, you might be very familiar with your instance in 2018, how you were very much opposed to any kind of development in your area, vehemently opposed to that. Lots of print that you can still read online regarding your disagreement with that. Your outlet was that you bought the 19 acres in order to that, because your main argument was that property values were going to go down in your neighborhood, and you didn't want your neighborhood developed that way. The same instance is here. It's a very tight neighborhood, and it's the start of a huge growth in the southeast corner of the city. And it's just not a place to put a five-story apartment building that is going to increase traffic so greatly, just change the dynamics of the whole neighborhood and the quality of life there. So I hope that the rezoning of this particular area doesn't pass. You can't do anything about the current zoning, which I think goes up to four stories, but I hope they wouldn't even go that high. But I've heard, whether it's the, the truth or not, you hear lots of things, you don't know how much truth to put in all that goes around, that they couldn't make any money if they didn't go five stories high. Well, that's not my problem, that's not the neighborhood's problem, that's their problem, to design something and to go to a location where they can make money, instead of using what they probably had already purchased and seeing what can we, how can we, you know, rezone and get as much as we can. Anybody that I've talked to in the neighborhood really isn't against the, the one issue of apartments on the first floor for the mixed-use development. That's not the issue, but it's the height, and when you add the height, you add the number of units in the massive area, uh, and increasing the density of that. So thank you for your time this evening. I know the hour is getting late, so I do appreciate you listening. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments on item 3.4, please?
Good evening. My name is Kevin Coons. I live on Pine Circle. Lived there since 2008, which is long enough to know that Mayor Bochensky put in the mailbox next door. That was a surprise that day.
My brother-in-law lived next door.
I also didn't know we could go on indefinitely. I would have planned to go on all night, but I guess I'll keep it brief to three minutes. I'm here to express my opposition to the proposed rezoning in five-story apartment development along Forty-seventh Avenue South. While I fully support the need for additional housing in Grand Forks, I believe this particular project at this height in this location will have significant negative impacts on neighboring properties, and I respectfully ask that you vote no on the, on the rezoning request. The building at five stories tall will dramatically alter the character of the surrounding area. It will tower over nearby homes, block views of the sky and natural light, and become a permanent visual disruption to the current neighborhood aesthetic. Zoning laws are designed to prevent exactly this kind of imbalance. They exist to protect neighboring property owners, to ensure predictability, and to maintain the integrity of existing communities. Another main, another major, another major concern is traffic. Forty-seventh Avenue South already experiences steady, sometimes heavy, traffic, particularly at intersections with Washington, Eleventh, and Cherry. Adding a high-density complex will worsen congestion and increase noise, something nearby residents are already struggling with. More importantly, the added volume poses a real safety risk, especially to children who walk by, or bike to nearby South Middle School. And I, I left out the, the Valley Dairy, because that's usually where they're headed in the summer to get stuff. So it is a public safety concern. What Mary didn't know is that on Pine Circle alone, and if you're familiar with our cul-de-sac, the first half of our cul-de-sac is twin homes designed for retired folks, and then the rest is the, um, is the split-entry style homes. We have 13 kids on our street. That's a lot of kid traffic going back and forth. The, um, the proposed apartments are luxury apartments and are unlikely to address the, uh, are unlikely to address the real affordability needs in our community. One large upscale development won't solve the housing challenge, and we shouldn't mislabel it as a solution. There are other, more appropriate areas within Grand Forks for higher-density infill development that would not come at the, at the expense of established neighborhoods. That said, I want to be clear. I'm not against thoughtful development. If the developer would prefer to integrate residential use on the first floor of the building, I would be supportive of that option. It may, it may provide a reasonable compromise that better blends with the surrounding area. But as proposed, the scale, the traffic impact of this five-story complex are too much for this location. I urge the council to protect the surrounding community, serve the voters and taxpayers of Grand Forks, and vote no on this rezoning project. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Perfect. I didn't even have to ask. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Bochensky, members of the council. Mayor Bochensky, thank you for putting in my mailbox. My name is Tim Langmo. I live at 4762 Pine Circle. As others have already stated, I oppose this rezoning. With the current density at, um, up to 60 units on the property, potentially going up to maybe 150 is what's feasible, um, as it's been requested, that doesn't fit with the neighborhood. It, uh, it's not going to help us. We are expecting there to be an apartment there. It is already zoned for that. It can stay zoned for that. Let it be what it's zoned for. We don't need to mess with it. Please oppose this rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you. I didn't have a mailbox business before. My brother-in-law lived there, so I put his mailbox in, just so people are aware. All right. Because I'm not taking any offers right now. All right. Any other comments for item 3.4? Mr. Brooks, maybe, I know some of it's in here, but could you maybe? Oh, sorry, close a public hearing, and then could you pull it up on a map, just so everyone's kind of aware of the location where we're talking about here? I know it's in there too, but it's...
I think I got the world's slowest computer here.
And then I guess if there's any comments from council in the meantime while he pulls that up, I just thought it'd be good to have.
You want the comments, Phil?
Sure. Ms. Lunskey, please.
Um, so this is right down the street from the district, correct? Which is a four-story. I guess I'm just really confused why we wouldn't want it right on Washington. It seems like kind of the perfect place for infill. I, I'm kind of asking what I'm, what am I missing?
Mr. Brooks, yeah, if you want to...
Yeah, if that was for me, um, here's the district right up here that is directly on Washington. Here's, um, here's the site here, uh, which is right behind the, the Valley Dairy. Um, I keep calling it Valley Dairy. I don't think it's Valley Dairy anymore. Um, and then this is that proposed, or potential Hugo site as well. Um, I know quite a bit was said about traffic as well, so I, I think first to your point, B3 is here. Uh, this site was kind of that scaled down, multi-family, mixed-use, was planned to go here, and then, uh, buffer, um, with, uh, two-family, uh, fourplexes, I think, in this townhome development, and then single-family over here. So it was that scaling that we were looking at, um, potentially. District up here, similar, uh, it's lower. Uh, I think there's even multi-family up here, and then as you go a little bit further away, you, you kind of reduce that density. But I think the, the one thing I did want to address, a couple of things that were said earlier, if I, if I may, Mayor, um, the zoning did get changed in 2009 in this case, so uh, as part of that buffering that we did put in, we also did do that, uh, the site to B3. In addition, in terms of traffic on that site, uh, if it's B3, you're talking commercial on the bottom floor. If we were to fill that up, uh, that is going to be more traffic than, uh, the number of units that, uh, we're talking about here in terms of the increase. Uh, in terms of access, this is out to Washington. I would anticipate probably this being one of the, because the majority of things are going to be to the north here. Folks are gonna, uh, two sites, if, if the left turns get difficult out of here, uh, as that, uh, traffic continues, this is going to be that easy on, onto Washington. I think that's, uh, happening a little bit with that, uh, current gas station that's there in terms of traffic that comes into that gas station, and then certainly as the grocery store comes, that brings traffic all day as well, so I just wanted to point that out overall.
Can you point out where the grocery store would be on here? Oh, that's the yellow.
Yep, that's the yellow site there. Here's the site, the proposed site that we're talking about.
Any further comments from council? President Sandy, please.
We spend a lot of time working with our zoning and our zoning maps, trying to get that buffer, um, going from lowest density to high-density to commercial. If you look at this, this is exactly the way we try to plan our city. Um, I mean, exactly. The developers, previous developers in Hugo's, they wanted the road to go through, but we vacated it and brought it to a Hammerhead cul-de-sac, so that the traffic can't flow from west to east into their, into their development. And I think if you, when you start talking about the traffic in the area, this is likely our highest traffic corridor in the entire city. The, the apartment buildings, and, or an additional floor of apartments is not going to change the traffic and the traffic patterns in and around that neighborhood, especially when the grocery store comes in. It's going to be one of the highest traffic areas in, in the city. And so I, I have a lot of respect and appreciate the neighbors coming in and, and talking about it, but really, in my opinion, I think this is being planned out basically the way the city intended, intended it when we put the whole plan together in the first place. Thank you.
Thank you, President Sandy. Mr. Friedhoff.
So President Sandy, I agree with you. The way, the way it was designed, if this, this has to pass six to one, correct? Because it's, so if it doesn't pass, does, are they still planning on building this there? And is the Hugo's going to continue to go in there as well?
Uh, Hugo's will still on both sites. Uh, I have not seen a, a development as of yet for that mixed-use site, as, uh, they haven't proposed anything. It has been sitting, uh, like this, uh, since 2009. So I, I think that is the difficulty under the current zoning that they're, in terms of trying to get that done. I think the Hugo's, just a matter, as we continue to fill out the southern end of town and just bring more traffic, that is going to help Hugo's into, into going into that space.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Bean, please.
A couple of questions. Increasing the density, is there any issue, first thing that comes to mind, is sanitary sewer?
Right. So, uh, we did, yeah, those all have to be followed. Uh, I know, um, engineering has looked at sanitary sewer. Uh, it does work, because, you know, as you look at the Hugo's to the south, that's not going to take a lot of sanitary sewer capacity either, so this, uh, small increases, um, for this whole site, it, it does work in terms of sanitary sewer. Storm sewer, they are currently going to look at evaluating that for the site, and, um, in terms of how they're going to drain that, that whole site, it's either to this existing or, or building new as well, so.
Or have to do something additional.
Correct. Yep, yep, they'll have to follow city code.
Um, the, uh, the townhouse buffer, are they two-story?
Uh, I do believe they are two-story, uh, those, uh, those units. I can pull one up. I think they're, yeah, they're two-story style.
Okay.
That's a pretty good example.
And I would have to agree with Mr. Sandy that, from the planning perspective, you go to single to a duplex or something to the higher density. That's kind of traditional planning when with, um, from the past when we had conventional zoning, right?
Correct.
Okay. I have a question. President, Vice President Weigl, I'll go over to you, Ms. Osowski.
Just maybe for the developers, is there a reason that the, I'm going to call it the inner U faces south versus facing it to the east or, um, a different direction? I guess if one of the concerns is privacy for the neighborhood, can we face that U to the east instead of a whole side of, um, windows looking towards the neighborhood? Maybe we have a couple.
Yeah. Craig Tweetin, 837 Shady Ridge Court. Um, we did to the south just for the northwest winds, prevailing winds, didn't want to leave it open. And then, um, as we're facing Hugo's actually, and so we thought it would be a little more convenient, but typically you'd want to have a south view for that.
Thank you. Ms. Osowski.
Yeah, um, without this zone change, they can still put an apartment building there,
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other further comment or motions from council?
I'm of approval.
A motion approved from President Sandy, second from Ms. Lunskey. Any further comment? All right, seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion's going to carry six to one with Osowski dissenting.
3.5, public hearing and second reading for the following three items relating to Burkholz's eighth development, should be postponed indefinitely at the request of the developer. Those three are public hearing and second reading ordinance dedicating right-of-way preliminary approval plat at Burkholz's eighth addition located at 1800 block of South 42nd Street. The second public hearing, second reading ordinance to amend the zoning map to rezone from A1 Agriculture Preservation District to Burkholz's eighth PUD located 1800 block of South 42nd Street. And the third public hearing, second reading of ordinance for annexation of Burkholz's eighth addition located 1800 block of South 42nd Street.
All right. Once again, Mr. Gostad, it's, they want to postpone indefinitely. Should we open a public hearing on the item, or just at this point?
No, I think they, I think the request was to postpone everything.
Okay. So for that, I'd be just looking for a motion. Motion from Osowski, second from Weigl. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. First the budget, and then that. Marine, you're on fire today. Nailed it. All right. Okay, we're just on to item four. I think this is the latest we've ever been, and just starting item four, but citizen comments as they relate to action items. Um, I know there's a few that were printed as well. We may have some people that had left, so, uh, Ms. Lenmark, if you want to go through it, and we will see if they're here or not.
I had three citizen comment forms filled out for this section. Um, I think Sarah Golbach has left, um, and then Matt Brufeld, I believe he left as well. They were both on item 5.1, so, um, so that leaves me with Andrew Krosnick, who's looking at items 5.3 and 5.12.
Okay. Mr. Krosnick, please. And we'll have a, on this one, we'll have a five-minute timer, so just keep your, you got either, either side there, you can see it.
I'll make it super quick. I know it's past my bedtime. Um, so I'm up here to talk about 5.12 in relation to the changes you're looking to make to the citizen comment policy. Uh, it's labeled as a required update based on North Dakota legislative actions. I realize with Senate Bill 2180, there are some changes that have to be made, but I feel the suggestions and discussion from last week's committee of the whole are taking the intent of Senate Bill 2180 and moving in the opposite direction. The intent was to ensure all municipalities would now be given citizens the opportunity for public comments at all meetings. It was not to limit or condense the amount of time for these comments. Some cities, like I believe mine not, weren't allowing for any comments at some meetings, so the bill was intended to allow for citizen engagement. Senate Bill 2180 states that municipalities have the option to limit individual speakers' times and limit the overall time period for citizen comments, but you guys already had that authority, you could have already had that cap in place. Uh, it's tough enough for many people to get up here, to get over the anxiety and fear of speaking in public. Causes quite a bit of anxiety, actually, and in sometimes it's an intimidating arena. And sometimes it's an intimidating arena. It's very difficult then for people to portray sometimes their points in five minutes or less. As I've run into, what if there are multiple action items someone's passionate about or is possibly being impacted by? How do they fit that all in five minutes? We've had the opportunity to then speak at the end of the meeting for another five minutes, but usually it's after the fact, so action's already taken place. I don't believe you've ever limited the number of speakers, though, so if someone showed up, they wanted to make a statement, you guys allowed that. Now with your proposed cap on the overall time period, you're essentially stating that some may not even have an opportunity to speak at all. Don't you guys want citizens to be a part of our local government process? We voted for you to represent us, but we also still may have input we'd like to share through the process. So please don't vote to take that right away from us. I never attended a single city council meeting prior to May. This is the only second, only the second meeting that I've spoken at, but I can sure tell you that it has been in some ways the only way to bend some ears, as it's not easy to communicate with everyone outside of this. It's also our opportunity to get our concerns out as public record to assist in informing the public, which is the body you all serve. I don't feel you should cut the time limit from five down to three minutes per person, and I most certainly don't feel you should be putting an overall cap on the period for comments. This ultimately may eliminate someone's ability to speak at a meeting at all. This was not the intention of Senate Bill 2180. You all have a very important role in this process, a great responsibility, and part of that process is listening to us as long as we are respectful throughout that process. And then just briefly on 5.3 regarding 39th Avenue South and the pre-application for tax incentive. Big surprise, I'm sure, that I'm up here for that. You guys know my position relating to these pilots being used for apartment complexes, specifically if they include amenities. I know this project's a bit more unique with it including income-based housing. There's both state and federal funding opportunities for projects like this. The pilot program was not intended for that under new and expanding businesses. So I just ask that you deny that application or at least table it till you further consider the discussion that we've had previously this evening. Thank you very much for your time, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Krosnik. Any further comments, Ms. Luntmark?
Not for this section.
All right, we will move on to action items. Ms. Osowski gave me a list earlier. Is that still the list you're looking for? You got a list that you wanted for items polled this evening?
Yeah, I gave you a list. I'll be quick when it comes to all of them, I'm sorry.
No worries, we've got.
I didn't realize it would be 9:40. It is way past my bedtime, so.
Okay, items, so we've got on here, items 5.3, 5.4, 5.12. Sorry, go back, 5.3, 5.4, 5.6, 5.12, 5.17, 5.18, and 5.19. Is there any other items that council wanted polled, knowing that item 5.1 has been postponed?
Did you get 18? You got 18? Okay, and then?
And then 19, yeah.
You got 19?
Yeah.
Hang on one second, let me see one thing, other thing I thought I had.
Ms. Berg, was there an item you wanted?
I just wanted to make sure we were doing, covering 5.1.
Yeah, so we got that, yeah. Well, we wouldn't be speaking on 5.1 tonight.
I wanted, I wanted 5.20 also, was that on there?
We still need to vote on it, I believe.
On the post-poll, we just went with, we concurred at the beginning of the new information, so we would need a vote. Okay, sorry, Ms. Osowski.
Did I have 5.20 on there?
No, you want to add it?
Um, I do.
Okay. Any other items from council members? They want polled?
Did you have 5.5 and 5.6? I'm sorry, I didn't.
5.5 is is not, I can put, add that on there. So right now I've got, I don't know if I should go the ones that are polled or the ones that are polled.
Mr. Mayor, I'm willing to put back 5.20 because it looks like we get another vote at it and more opportunity to ask questions, so.
Okay, so for tonight.
I'm willing, for the sake of the time this evening, I will draw 5.20.
So I've got polled for further discussion items 5.3, 5.4, 5.5, 5.6, 5.12, 5.17, 5.18, and 5.19. So with that, we look for approval then on items 5.2, 5.7, 5.8, 5.9, 5.10, 5.11, 5.13, 5.14, 5.15, 5.16, and 5.20. Can I get a motion to approve those items?
So moved.
Got a motion by Berg, second by Weigel. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. This was the trickiest one I think I've ever done of these, but I think I got it right. So Ms. Storsted, start with 5.3 through 5.6, and then 5.12 and 5.17 through 5.19.
Got it. 5.3, 39th Avenue South Development Project Tax Incentive Pre-Application.
All right.
I'm ready to vote.
All right. Any other comment on this item? Otherwise we'll look for a motion.
Who approve?
Motion to approve from Sandy, second from Ms. Berg. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Aye.
Motion carries six to one with Osowski dissenting.
5.4 is Ultra Sports Complex, project guaranteed maximum price GMP bid package number two.
All right, thank you.
I just have one question. Um, there's the, I'm sorry, I'm trying to go quickly, so I don't mean to interrupt. I, I have a question about the additional service fees that was just put on here on the 18th, was this?
Mr. Fionn?
Mayor Bochensky and Councilmember Osowski. So there's three motions. One would be to approve that GMP package number two in an amount of $37 million in in additional funds. That's the same number you saw last week at the community hall. I highlighted within the staff report, we're still finalizing some of the items, namely the turf and also like the track issues. We're also looking at the deep dive well cover. And then finally, last week, it was brought up about the pool deck cover, if we should look to more of a synthetic surface versus the swirled concrete, if you remember that conversation. So those are the four things that we're working on right now. Of those four, only the synthetic, I'll call it the synthetic pool deck liner would cost more. The other three would be reductions. Once we finalize that, I will come back with a GMP number two that finalizes and reconciles all that. So that's what the first item is. The second item is regarding JLG's or who's our architect of record, their basic fee agreement. So one, the $229,000 and and $779,044 is for the bidding portion of their basic services agreement. That's their percentage that we've agreed to. And then finally, the $1.5 million and change is for construction administration, and that's a similar percentage that we had agreed to as part of their basic service agreement. The third item are additional services of $74,375. That, those are to look at the redesign of the, I'll call it the off-site infrastructure components, based upon looking at adding courts. And so that, those would be mainly civil engineering things that we're going to look at, the water sewer, paving, so that when we come back with the building itself, we'll also have the off-site infrastructure component parts about what those costs are. Those are the three items that are are in front of you this evening.
Did item two end up coming in less expensive than we thought, being the building was a little bit less expensive?
It was, yep. The total, I think Mr. Sandy asked, you know, should, and I think Mr. Bean had asked, based upon the percentage of the project itself, should the, should the architectural service fees be less than they are less? So they're about, I think, $700,000 less than what we portrayed last week.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Move approval.
Got a motion approved from Weigel.
Second.
Second from Ms. Berg. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
5.5, grant funding agreement between North Dakota Parks and Rec and the city of Grand Forks for downtown Gateway and Greenway project phase one.
All right, thank you. President Sandy.
Mr. Mayor, if we sign this agreement, does that authorize city staff to start construction or spend any money?
You asking me?
I'm asking anyone that might have any idea.
Where are we at, Ms. Parvy, on that process? And what exactly are we approving tonight with the grant funding agreement at this point, phase one, please?
Good evening, Mayor Bochensky, Councilmember Sandy. So the question is whether or not that authorizes us to begin construction. It it approves the grant, so right now we're working with Houston Engineering and RDG on the design, and we wouldn't actually award the bid until we bid on that project, which is planned for later this year.
If we accept the grant, can we give it back if it doesn't work out? It'd be obviously, I think that's the gist.
I think at this point we can, but knowing that we were notified of the award last fall and then finally have the grant to sign now, I think we're at the point where we're making decisions to keep going, but.
Okay. I, I'm, although I've been supportive, I'm not going to support this tonight. I don't think we can afford it. I think that's all there is to it for me. If we're going to be using flood protection dollars to pay for it, and we don't have the economic development funds any longer to pay that, to pay the money back, all that says to me is we just can't afford it. And so I'd love to do it, and maybe at some point in the future we can do it, and there will be other grant opportunities in the future. I just, for one, I, at this point, I'm out, so, thanks.
Ms. Osowski.
I agree 100% with Mr. Sandy. I was also very disappointed today when we saw in the budget that our flood protection is going up 5%. And so I really, I mean, that's where the funds are going to come from for this project and our property or our taxes are going to go up for flood protection. So I agree with Mr. Sandy. I don't think that we can afford this either. We are raising taxes on our citizens to borrow against our flood protection, which I think is a huge necessity within our community, and I think it prioritizes over all of the fund stuff that can be put down there, so I'm a no also.
All right, thank you. Any further comments? Ms. Lunskey.
Sadly, I'm going to be a no too. I think with all the changes, it feels like a destination park. The amphitheater, some of those things were cut out. I think with all of the the cuts to the economic dollars, I, I just can't support it at this time.
If I may, Mayor.
Ms. Parvy.
So the one thing that's important to know is the 5% increase for the flood protection and greenway fees isn't actually designated to this project. That minor increase from 2% to 5% is actually for the maintenance fees that we have, our operations and maintenance budget out of the 5,400 fund. That's actually what that budget goes towards or that that fund goes towards. And that particular fund hasn't been increased more than 50 cents over the last 20 years. That's how we pay for like maintenance of the trees, mowing the grass, cleaning up after a flood. So those are things that are currently funded out of that. 4154, of course, is the flood protection greenway maintenance fund. It was always designated to fund projects within the greenway, larger projects, as well as with the flood protection. And the changes were made, not to reimburse it with economic development funds, but the fund is plush and does have enough funding in it to support everything that's needed within flood protection maintenance, as well as this match to this project. The only other thing I just want to remind you is this area, it's not just a destination park, it's to develop a space for our underserved portion of the community. So downtown was chosen because it does meet that Justice 40 category, so it's kind of a, a one-time opportunity for a grant of this, of this kind to come into Grand Forks for that particular area of town.
I have a comment on that.
Let me just, we got a couple of people haven't spoke real quick, so I'll go to them and then we'll go back to you. Mr. Bean.
How much is the total for this?
It's 6.9 million.
Okay, does it have to be 6.9 million? Can it be 2 million or something less so that we don't have to, I mean, we could do what you, you said for the underserved areas without having to spend this exorbitant amount of money?
We could go back and and review that. I think one thing that the project was chosen because they liked that there was a master plan done, so that council had, or the committee, community, I'm sorry, had put together a master plan, and that's what they really, really liked about this project, was that there was improvements to this space. Can we scale that back? I'm sure we can. It would just take some discussions with the North Dakota Parks and Rec and then the National Park Service.
Well, and part of my rationale is beyond that. I really loved what they did, but it's in a floodway and a floodplain that's flooding with ice and what, and other impacts. I was concerned about how the long-term upgrade, upkeep maintenance would have to be for that as it was shown.
And I would agree with you. Most times we wouldn't pick something to be in the floodplain, however, this is a fairly high area of the floodplain. Believe me, 20 years ago, the same discussion was had about whether or not we should do anything at Riverside Park, Lincoln Park, should we put in a boat ramp? And so should we build trails because we don't want people down there because they could be raped? You know, all sorts of negative activity happens along the floodplain. And so these were comments that were made by the community at the time that people were concerned about even being down by the river. Now it's one of our greatest assets. So I just, I want to share that with you, that we have thought considerably about where it would be and how it would be developed, and that it is in an appropriate spot, that it could be easily cleaned up after a flood.
Yeah, again, if I just, I think if it were scaled back, we, I'd, I'd feel better knowing the economics that we're in without actually losing it. But the motion for us looks like it's all or none.
At this point, that's what the grant is, or the contract is for, but if council would like us to take it back and look at something less, we definitely can.
Ms. Storsted, I know you have a comment, but you could also mention, I know it's it's one of the budgetary things we were looking at. It's 2163, long-term, probably could handle it, but I think looking at, you know, how do we want to balance our, you know, our, our needs going forward? I think it's, it's a challenge. So that was one of the reasons to try to build up 2163 for some of these other opportunities. So that's why the shift was made to a fund that was available, but it could be shifted back. And I think it makes sense to not go out and borrow the funds if we have the funds available to use them and reimburse through 2163. That's certainly something, and that's the economic development sales tax portion, that's certainly something that council could do. I think from an economic development standpoint or just a regional draw standpoint, it's a pretty phenomenal opportunity with half of it paid for, you know, by a grant that we're not going to see in a long, long time. So I would certainly weigh that with some of the other comments made and the, the dollars we're spending to take care of more officers, to take care of Town Square. I think we got an opportunity to make that such a tremendous area that extends beyond the, on the, on the, the flood dike. But again, that's, I guess I'm just one person that doesn't vote. So Ms. Storsted, please.
Thank you, Mayor Bochensky, members of council. The only additional point I just want to, if you have your budget binders in front of you, I don't know if, if everybody got a copy tonight, but before you make any decisions, so page 508, that's going to show your CIP for that fund 4154. So that had those dollars incorporated over a two-year period, so you can look at that cash flow, the ins and outs, and, and it does flow and it does, it doesn't harm that I project here with major capital maintenance. But we definitely can come back to the economic development discussion as well. But I just wanted to make sure you see that that fund is healthy.
What is the balance? Maybe just walk us through it. I know we're reading it here, but why don't you tell us exactly what you were pointing out?
So the, the current cash balance estimated to begin 2026 is roughly 9 million. You have an annual revenue stream in there of about 1.9, almost $2 million, and you have projects slated with this project, 5.3 million in 2026, 4 million in 2027, and, you know, roughly, you know, one and a half to 2 million going forward. The ending projected cash balance at the end of the sixth year in here is roughly 4.3 million. So as you look and consider your decision, I just wanted to point out that CIP for the flood capital maintenance fund.
So if you were to remove that project, you could add, is it 3.6, 3.5 roughly? You could add that to the estimated cash balance end of this, and you'd be, in 2031, you would have 8 million roughly if you were to remove this project? Okay. I think that was some of the reasons we looked at using that fund.
Mayor Bochensky, I think because we're going to have the budget on August 4th, and we're going to have a lot of discussion on 2163 and 4154 and all those other digits, I think instead of voting it down, I would recommend that you postpone the decision and move it to the next city council meeting on August 4th, when you're going to have discussion on the budget. And I think at that budget, as I recall, I don't think we could raise the budget after that meeting. And so it'd give you two weeks to consider it, and we'll look at various options. So if I could ask you just to postpone August 4th, you'll have fuller information in which to make a decision. to make a decision.
Well, it's ultimately a council decision, I guess. Got a motion to postpone from Friedhoff, second from Ms. Lunskey. Any further discussion on the item for tonight? All right, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
5.6, proposed enhancements to area of the flood protection greenway system near Rivers Edge.
Thank you, Mayor. For similar reasoning as 5.5, I know that we're getting grant funding for a big portion of this project. I just, I'll go back to, I just think this is a solution in search of a problem, spending a half million dollars to put in a path so that we can have our PD make it easier for them to chase derelicts out of having a party. So, again, I'm just, I'm not in tonight on this one either. Thank you.
I get it, Mr. Sandy.
Okay, thank you. Was there, do you want to give any further context on what this exact project was? I know it was discussed.
It was, yeah. We discussed it at the committee of the whole mayor, but it really just enhances that space. It is used by the community, but a lot by that neighborhood, as a nice fishing spot, and it's really in disrepair and actually not in a good state, and so, have concerns more of something bad happening down there, that we can't either get there, we're not there, and not taking, you know, very good care of our, the space that's open to the public down there. So, this was a way to make improvements there, and we can proceed however the council feels.
And what was the total cost? And I'm having trouble finding items now, these books are getting.
It's about $500,000.
And what's our portion?
Right around 300.
Oh, that's the 284, 550?
Yes, correct.
Okay. All right, any further comments from council?
So, we can vote, I'll make a motion to approve, and then we can just vote and move on.
Sounds good. We got a motion to approve from Vice President Weigel.
I'll second.
Second from Ms. Osowski. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'm going to do a roll call vote, because I think this one might be close. Could you do that for us, Ms. Thorsted?
All right, Weigel?
No.
Osowski?
No.
Berg?
No.
Lunskey?
Yes.
Friedhoff?
No.
Vien?
Yes.
President Sandy?
No.
I believe the motion failed two to five?
It fails, correct.
All right, thank you. We'll move on. Oh, I lost my list now. Did you write it down, Ms. Thorsted?
I show 5.12 is next, a citizen comment policy.
All right.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we set a maximum of 30 minutes with three minutes maximum for each person who wants to speak, and the comments be delivered similar to the way they are right now, as item four, citizen comments, but it can be on either action items or non-action items.
Okay, we got a motion from President Sandy. Do we have a second before we go to further comment?
I second, but I have a question about that. Mr. Sandy, so we'll just have one comment period before the action items, right? Okay. Yeah, as long as they're before the action items, and, you know, at first, I do really appreciate what Andrew said about, you know, like changing the citizen comment, and, you know, we're here because of the citizens, and I did vote that way, I think, last week, maybe for the citizen comments. I'm not sure how I voted, but I did some research on it after I left, and it is very, very common for all boards that contain citizen comments to have a general time limit and have rules around them. And I, and I believe, you know, this time, the reason why we're changing our comment is because, our comment policy is because we have to from the state, because we're not in compliance. I felt last time, it was a little bit more, you know, when we went through this a couple years ago, it was a little bit more, maybe there were some other reasons why maybe people wanted the comment section changed, but, I mean, I feel like we're doing it for good reasons, and I do agree with the 30-minute time limit, because after researching it, it is very, very common, and the 30 minutes is the timeframe that a lot of other boards, councils use. So, I, I don't know if I already did, but I second. Mr. Sandy?
Yeah, we got a motion to second, so a further comment, Ms. Berg, please.
I'd be in support of changing the comment time per person to three minutes, but I'm not in support of having a limited amount of time overall.
Thank you, Ms. Berg. Any further comments on this item? One more color, please.
Also, for that, how it's written, for item 1.5 on that paperwork, it does indicate there's another correction that needs to be made to three minutes instead of five minutes.
See that, Mr. Gosted?
I'm trying to locate it. There's a lot of redlining on the version I got, so I'm trying to find the, if there is grammatical error, we can, we'll fix that. I understand it's a three-minute per person, 30 minutes maximum, one citizen comment period before action items.
That is the motion and second, yes.
And this does not eliminate our public hearing time, where they get to continuous, they can speak.
Those are all statutorial from the state, so.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, any further comments? All right, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Aye.
Motion carries five to two, with, is it Berg and Weigel dissenting? All right, 5.17?
Nutrient Egg Solutions Fertilizer Chemical Storage Facility, conditional use permit located 5301 North Washington Street.
Thank you, and I think Ms. Osowski just had a couple of questions. This one discussed at the Cow? Or maybe it was?
No.
No, Mayor, this one came from Planning and Zoning.
Oh, okay. All right, that makes sense.
I just wanted to know a little bit about it, so.
Sure. Mayor, Councilperson Osowski, I'll just quickly, quickly give you a rundown of where this particular location's at. So, this is the new Gristo area up here, 40th Avenue South, or 40th Avenue North is our northern edge of the flood protection. So, we're up even north of that, so this is almost where North Washington meets up with the interstate. So, this is in our ET area, our extraterritorial area. We've worked with Faulkner Township and speaking with them. There's a fertilizer company that's up in this area here. They're requesting a conditional use, which is the requirement of that zoning district. These are for the egg chemicals that they are selling to farm producers in the area. We've put that conditional use permit, the previous one was located actually right behind in this location. They moved out here to North Washington because they're being blocked by the train tracks that come through here. So, they're out on North Washington now. That's just a quick rundown. I can certainly answer any questions that you may have.
I move approval.
Motion to approve from Ms. Osowski, second from President Sandy.
Just one very quick comment. I think the advantage of this location, obviously, it's north. If you have any issues, it doesn't ever impact our water supply, and we'll be able to maintain that as long as it's, I think the location where it is.
Thank you.
All right, any further comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
5.18, introduce ordinance, preliminary approval of request to amend the zoning map to rezone from B1 Limited Commercial District to R2 1-2 Family Resident District, 1302 Avenue North and 1308 6th Avenue North. B3 General Business District, R2 1-2 Family District, properties located 623 South 16th, 1412 North 1st Street and 1411 North 1st, and B3 General District to R4 Multiple Family District, located 1415 12th Avenue North and 702 South 14th and 1221 6th Avenue North.
All right, and then what was the recommendation for planning and zoning? I think Ms. Osowski had asked you that these items could be voted on individually, so if you want to.
Sure. This came unanimous from planning and zoning. We've been working with some homeowners that their homes currently are, they're not zoned appropriately for their single-family home.
Can you pull it up on the map, since you have it up?
There's many different sites, there's three different sites, so mostly, they've been along Washington, so 1308 and 1302, 5th and 6th Avenue are located.
So, these are currently business district zone, and they just want a residential zoning based on what they currently are as residences?
Correct.
So, it's kind of more of a cleanup than a.
So, even the one, C is the issue that I have, turning it into an R4, the multi-family, can you?
Is that what it already is?
Well, no, it's a B3 for general business, and they want to rezone it to an R4, and so.
Right. Mr. Brooks, yeah, I don't know if that's what's already on the site.
That's the only one I really kind of have an issue with.
Yeah, we were trying to stay consistent with the zoning that was around it, Ms. Osowski, so in this case, R4, it does sound bad, it's a high density, but we allow R1, R2, R3, R4 up on that, within that site. This is a very small one, so they do get a little bit better impervious lot coverage to match what's currently on the site.
Are you pointing to it now? Is this it? You're going to put an R4?
1221 6th Avenue North is this particular one, this location here.
And this is zoned for business currently, and we want to change it all the way to?
To an R4.
An R4?
Correct.
So, what, what kind of building would go in there that?
They're not putting a new building in.
We're just changing the zone of it?
Right.
Correct, yeah. It's not zoned appropriately today, so if they were to try to sell their home, they would not be able to. It would have to, what happens is the, with the financing rules, they get caught, and then they come in and ask for rezoning, and a lot of times, that happens after they're fairly down the way in terms of trying to sell their home. So, we've found some of these, and we're contacting the homeowners ahead of time to try to get them zoned correctly.
Okay. Do you think we need an R4 zone there, or why is it R4?
Well, if it went to R1, they wouldn't have the impervious lot coverage to match the R1, because the R1 allows for 35% lot coverage. These smaller lots, it's very common north of, north of City Hall here with all the single families, those are in R4 as well. It's common in the smaller areas. Thank you.
Is that for A, B, and C? We good to do it all in one?
Yes, sir.
All right. Got a motion to approve. Got a second from Ms. Berg, so a motion from Osowski, second from Berg. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
5.19, introduce ordinance, preliminary approval to amend zoning map to rezone from I1 Light, L1 Light Industrial District to B3 General Commercial District, properties located 1307 North 20th Street, 2001, 2005 Gateway Drive, and 2010, 12, and 14, 13th Avenue North.
All right, Mr. Brooks, you got any, any context or any questions, Ms. Osowski, on this item?
No, I'm going to move approval, because we kind of get a second look at it, and also, I guess, are we kind of doing the same thing for this, or?
This is currently an industrial, where they're making them B3, which matches, this is the Muddy Waters Clay area here, and then Vreeland Apartments, so, and they're doing commercial in this area. Recently, we did Stevens Mattress, we rezoned that to match the, what the request was there. So, this whole area is moving out of industrial into B3.
Okay, thank you.
And this one, was it unanimous, too, at planning and zoning?
Correct, and we need, this is a supermajority requirement here as well.
Okay. So, you got a motion to approve from Weigel?
I already moved approval.
Oh, you did? Did we get a second? We shouldn't have been talking until we got a second. So, I'm going to give Weigel a second and pretend it happened earlier. All right. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. I think that gets us through action items. Move on to six information items. So, after all those action items, you saved us and had no information items, so thank you. Item seven, approval of minutes and bills.
7.1, vendor listing.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved from Berg, second from President Sandy. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
7.2, July 7th minutes.
Got a motion to approve, as is from President Sandy, second from Ms. Berg. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. All right, item eight, citizen comments of the general nature.[1720.33]